Anthony Torrios and I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome to this Planning Commission meeting. Please remember to turn off your cell phones. The parking validation machine for the garage in front, uh, under City Hall is located at the rear of the chambers. Following roll call during the summary of hearing procedures, we will review how the public may provide comment during today's session. At this time, if you're able, please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now move on to roll call. First up is Vice Chair Cantrell.
Here.
Commissioner Barocchio. Commissioner Bundal.
Here.
Commissioner Bickford.
Here.
Commissioner Lardinois.
Here.
Commissioner Oliverio. Commissioner Rosario.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Myself here, that's seven in attendance, so we have quorum. All right, we will now move on to summary of hearing procedures. If you would like to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table near the audiovisual technician and deposit the completed card in the basket. There are also speaker cards in the back of the chambers and at the side entrance. The procedure for this hearing is as follows. After staff's presentation, applicants and/or appellants may make up to a five-minute presentation. During the public comment period, the Chair will call out names on the submitted speaker cards in the order received for those members of the public who attend in person. As your name is called, line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. Generally, each speaker will be given up to two minutes for public testimony and speakers using a translator will have up to four minutes. At the discretion of the Chair, the time allotted to each speaker may be changed depending on the number of items on the agenda, number of speakers, and other factors. Speakers using a translator will have double the time allotted. After the public testimony, the applicant and/or appellant may make closing remarks for up to an additional five minutes. Planning Commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to Commissioners' questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. The public hearing will then be closed and the Planning Commission will take action on the item. The Planning Commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The Planning Commission's action on rezonings, prezonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the City Council. The City Council will hold public hearing on these items. Section 20.120.400 of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protest to the City Council on rezonings and prezonings. The Planning Commission's action on conditional use permits is appealable to the City Council in accordance with section 20.100.220 of the municipal code. Agendas and all staff reports for this meeting may be accessed on the city's website. We'll now move on to call to order and orders of the day. Before we begin, I want to remind the Planning Commission members and members of the public to follow our code of conduct at meetings. This includes commenting on the specific agenda item only and addressing the full body. Public speakers will not engage in a conversation with commissioners or staff. All members of the Planning Commission, staff, and the public are expected to refrain from abusive language. Repeated failure to comply with the code of conduct, which will disturb, disrupt, or impede the orderly conduct of this meeting, may result in removal from the meeting. This meeting of the Planning Commission will now come to order. All right, first up, we will have public comment. Now is the time for public comment to the Planning Commission on non-agendized items. Please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the technician. Each member of the public may address the commission for up to two minutes. The commission cannot take any formal action without the item being properly noticed and placed on an agenda. In response to public comment, the Planning Commission is limited to the following options: responding to statements made or questions posed by members of the public, or requesting staff to report back on a matter at a subsequent meeting, or directing staff to place the item on a future agenda. Staff, do we have any speakers for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda? Or are there any members of the audience who would like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? All right, I'm not seeing anyone move forward, so we will move on to deferrals and removals from calendar. We don't have any items to defer this evening, is that correct, staff?
That is correct.
Perfect. In that case, we will move on to the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar this evening, but we have public comment cards requested for item 4B, so we will pull that and hear that separately. So do we have anyone who would like to speak on the minutes? Otherwise, do we have a motion from? Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Oliverio with a second from Commissioner Lardinois. If there's no further discussion, we will move on to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bundal.
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lardinois.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosario.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes, that's nine yes, zero no's, so the motion passes. All right, we will now move on to item 4B from the consent calendar, which is a conditional use permit to allow the removal of seventeen trees for the construction of an approximately forty-eight thousand square foot residential care facility consisting of ninety-four beds on a 1.77 gross acre site located on the eastern side of Union Avenue. Staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Cameron G., I'm the Planning Project Manager for this item. This project consists of a conditional use permit to allow the removal of seventeen trees, including fourteen ordinance size and three non-ordinance size, for the construction of an approximately forty-eight thousand fifty-one square foot two-story residential memory care facility. The facility would consist of seventy rooms with ninety-four beds, living rooms, activity rooms, office space, dining areas, a community garden, and a surface parking lot with fifty-two vehicle parking spaces. An emergency backup generator would be located near the rear of the building. The facility and parking lot would be accessed by a new twenty-six-foot-wide driveway along Union Avenue, and a total of one hundred eight twenty-four-inch box trees would be planted on-site. Public improvements include sidewalk widening, new street trees, and bulbouts at the Union Avenue Byron Way and Union Avenue Cambriana Drive intersections. The site is currently vacant, is a currently vacant portion of a parcel occupied by the Casa de Mir Montessori School. No changes are occurring to the school. The site is surrounded by single-family residences to the north, south, and east, and the Campbell Union High School District office to the west. The project is consistent with the site's general plan land use designation of public quasi-public, as well as general plan policies regarding the provision of facilities to accommodate future healthcare needs of San Jose's aging population. The project is also consistent with the PQP Public Quasi-Public Zoning District's development standards, which include setbacks in height. The project also meets zoning code standards related to lighting, noise for the generator, and parking. The project is consistent with all applicable citywide design standards and guidelines, including standards related to bicycle parking, surface parking design, landscaping, and facade design. The project includes an exception to a design standard requiring new vehicular driveways on secondary streets. The new driveway will be installed along Union Avenue, which is considered a primary street. The exception is granted as the other two frontages, which are Byron Way and Cambriana Drive, they do not have at least one hundred fifty feet of frontage from their intersections to locate the new driveway, which is a requirement of the San Jose Complete Streets Design Standards and Guidelines. The City of San Jose prepared an initial study mitigated negative declaration in compliance with CEQA. The initial study concluded that the proposed project would not result in any significant and unavoidable environmental impacts with implementation of identified mitigation measures. The M&amp;D includes impacts related to air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, hazards and hazardous materials, transportation, and tribal cultural resources. The project includes a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program to lessen the identified impacts to a less-than-significant level. Staff also followed Council Policy 6-30 for public outreach. An onsite sign has been posted on the property since October 25th, 2024. Staff therefore recommends that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit. This concludes staff's presentation, thank you.
Thank you, staff. We will now turn it over to the project applicant for a five-minute presentation. And if you could just state your names for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
My name is Lauren Shook.
And my name is Doug Pancake, Douglas Pancake Architects, Architect of Record.
My name is Lauren Shook, I'm the President and CEO, co-founder of Silverado. So thank you, Commissioners, we are very appreciative of your time tonight to hear our project. And I founded the company twenty-eight years ago to specifically care for those who have memory impairments. We have twenty-seven locations in ten states, coast-to-coast, right now. The closest one is up in Belmont, Silverado Belmont Hills. We have another one in Berkeley, Silverado Berkeley. And those are our two closest communities here. But what we do is we give people a quality of life. Our objective is to give the residents, the families, and we also get to give our associates a quality of life. So for the residents, these people are coming from destinations that they've had ultimate and multiple failures in their life, and they've given up a lot. And our objective is when they come through those doors, to give them that quality of life back, and give them a purpose, and give them meaning, and give them a reason to get up in the morning, and let them know that their life isn't over. And we do the same thing for the families. And we have one of the top university affiliations in multiple sites throughout the country, started with UCSD, UCLA, USC, that's UCSF, and also Stanford. And we have a relationship with the Stanford Hospital that we take people out of their ER, all the way up to Belmont Hills right now, that they can't place. So this would be another location that would be very beneficial for them. The top evidence-based clinical outcomes in the nation is authenticated by Johns Hopkins University, with less than three percent emergency room visitation rates, less than four percent thirty-day rehospitalization rates, and ninety-plus percent of the people will pass away on hospice, which is a quality of measure that's very, very important. The NFL chose us as number-one provider for their players in the earliest times of the eighty-eight plan. Our programs have been duplicated in other countries, and we present internationally all the time. So they're duplicated in Denmark, and I'm going to stop now and let Doug Pancake talk more about this particular project. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Doug Pancake, Douglas Pancake Architects. I have an unusual firm, all I do is senior living and healthcare work, and very much so in specialized memory care environments. I've been doing this for nineteen ninety-four, Lauren and I have worked and created twenty-five buildings maybe across the country. I've done all of this California work. My master's degree in the early nineties was residential Alzheimer care environments when there was no such thing, and so I've been able to lead the evolution of memory care as a residential care facility model in the state of California. I sit on the State Fire Marshal's Code Advisory Committee for RCFs, so from a fire and life safety standpoint, these buildings are incredibly safe, while they provide purpose, opportunities, spontaneity for success, opportunities for success with these residents, spontaneity and bring real, meaningful life experiences for these folks who otherwise wouldn't have any. The good news is that it works. We've gone back in and looked at our buildings, we look at how our environmental design actually works as a prosthetic and actually supports missing skills. The environmental design actually works as a therapeutic environment, we call it, where it exercises remaining skills, and the outcomes are remarkable. I've done work in your wonderful city before for Brookdale Senior Living, I work for Atria, all of the large providers that you probably recognize, lots of not-for-profit work. Working with Lauren has been an amazing experience, but instead of me talking about all my buildings, I've gone back and watched the residents, and the good news is that these environments really do work. They function at a higher competency, they feel more autonomy and perceived independence, and exercising intellectual skills, social skills, emotional skills, keeping those present, I believe, actually slows the progression of a dementing illness, mainly Alzheimer's disease. Lauren has tracked all of that. I have thirty-one seconds left, I'd be more than happy to answer questions and talk about my work forever, I am an architect, so I love to talk about my work, but the folks will get along better in this building, thank you.
Thank you. We will now open the floor to public comment for this item. I'll start with the two speaker cards I have here, but if there's any other members of the audience who'd like to speak on this item, feel free to fill out a speaker card and give it to the technician now. First up, we have Favin McDaniel, followed by Birgit Calvillage. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone come forward. Okay, feel free to come down, thank you. And if you could just state your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
My name is Birgit, sorry, my name is Birgit Calvillage, I live on Jennifer Way, four doors from the proposed facility. Traffic is a nightmare already because of the new school that came in, there has not been an updated traffic study. School went in August, so seven months ago, and there hasn't been a traffic study, one hundred and twenty-five students there. The trees, which seems to be the big issue now, on the Byron side, it says there's not going to be a driveway there, I don't see why those trees need to come out. I can understand some of them, there's a huge oak tree, which is beautiful, even though I have an oak allergy, I would love to see it stay, but I understand that you need to keep, that you need to get that in order to get the building out. That's all, I was going to talk more about the traffic, but I'll just stick to the trees.
Thank you. And then do we have a Mr. McDaniel to provide comment on this item? All right, if not, if there's any other members of the audience who would like to speak on this item, please come down to the podium at this time. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone move forward, so with that, we will turn it back over to the project applicant for an additional five minutes if you have anything to add, otherwise we can move the discussion back to the commission. Anything to add? Sure.
There are two memory care units within less than a mile and a half in either direction. Belmont Village went in last year, and it's, I think it's like a hundred and twenty units. And there is one Bascom Avenue Memory Care, assisted living, which is including memory care, and that is a mile and a quarter away. So we've got a lot of places in addition to the little small ones, thank you.
Thank you. And now we will turn it back over to the project applicant for an additional up to five minutes.
Hi, good evening, Paul Mullin, representing Silverado Senior Living, thank you so much for having us here this evening. We're very excited to bring a new memory care facility here to the City of San Jose. Everywhere we've built memory care, we've made a huge difference among the senior population, as well as the neighborhood. Part of our plan to remediate the loss of these trees is providing a public garden. This public garden will be open to everybody that's our neighbor, as well as the school kids next door, we hope the school kids come over to our community for some intergenerational activities that really helps with the seniors. And as far as parking and the very lengthy CEQA process we went through and traffic, unfortunately, we really don't see as many visitors as we'd like to. You know, people do come on the weekends and for holidays, we do have staff that obviously come to the community, and our parking lot will accommodate that, but we're not a very traffic-intensive use. Nobody that lives there, the eighty-some-odd residents, obviously will be driving, so quite honestly, it's a very traffic-calming use for this type of neighborhood, and that's what we've found around the country. We really look forward to getting to know our neighbors and listening to their concerns and making sure we address them. We always reach out to the fire department, to the police department, all our neighbors, we welcome them in, we wish more people would come and visit us, and we hope you do too, so thank you so much for considering our use.
I would like to address the comment about other assisted livings with memory care in the area, there certainly are, and they're Belmont Village, fine operator, I know the founder there very well, Patricia Will, and the whole team. And we are the destination that those operators choose for people they can't handle. Twenty percent of our move-ins nationwide, we only do memory care, that's all we do. Twenty percent of our move-ins nationwide come from our colleagues in the field who cannot handle the people that they're taking care of. Right now Belmont Hills, up in Belmont, is got people living in it from San Jose, and we get people as far south as Santa Cruz and Monterey, coming up to there because there's no place else that can take care of people and give them a quality of life like we can. We don't restrain people, we reduce the use of psychotropics, we use a holistic model of medicine, along with the best of science. We have medical directors, licensed nurses twenty-four hours, seven days a week, and we have master's-level social workers. Our training program is one that we created ourselves and is internationally accredited by the Alzheimer's Disease International Body, there are five accredited programs in the world. Our team was presenting at their international conference in Krakow, Poland in last April, where a hundred and sixty-six-plus countries were represented. And, you know, that is the level of sophistication we have that no one else in the US or anywhere else in the world has, unless you go to the other four universities, which none of their, none of them are in the US. So that's the degree of competencies we have, that's why Stanford chooses us to take care of their people right out of the ER. So we're going to be a very welcome addition to all of the competitors here, in as much as the need is local, and it's a very large population, so thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will turn discussion back over to the commission, starting with Vice Chair Cantrell, followed by Commissioner Lardinois.
Actually, it sounds wonderful, as much as I hope I'll never need it, I'm glad it's going to be there and available for the community, I move that we approve this request.
All right, we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Vice Chair Cantrell with a second from Commissioner Oliverio, we will continue the discussion with Commissioner Lardinois, followed by Commissioner Bickford.
Thank you. I just want to ask, there was, the public commenter raised issues about tree removals and traffic, I want to ask if staff has a response to this.
Sure, I can answer the, I'll answer the trees first, and then I'll answer the traffic second. So there will be some street trees that are removed, and that's a part of the sidewalk improvements, the sidewalk will be widened and new street trees will be planted in place of them. With regards to the traffic, there was a transportation analysis that was performed for the project, and it concluded that the project will be in conformance with the city's transportation policy, with the implementation of some traffic calming measures and pedestrian network improvements, which I can go into detail if you'd like, as well as a transportation to management, a transportation demand and management plan, hopefully to reduce, you know, the number of trips that will, that the site will see.
Yeah, could you elaborate on what the TDM is for this project?
Sure, yeah, so the, the management plan will include commuter reduction in marketing slash education, which is the implementation of commuter reduction, marketing, and education for employees to encourage alternative transportation modes, as well as an onsite TDM coordinator, which, let's see, and I believe that is, that is it, actually.
Okay, thanks. And I just want to speak to the issue of the need for this kind of service. The very youngest baby boomers are just a few ways, a few years from retirement age, they're the second-largest generation this country's ever had, the largest generation millennials, the very oldest millennials are forty-five, so they're not too far off either. And so, and then also specifically in this county, our population is aging faster than the rest of the country because of our demographics. And so, while obviously not every senior citizen needs memory care, as that population grows, the need for that kind of service will grow, so it's important that we're permitting these facilities to address that demand. So yeah, I support the motion to approve this project, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bickford.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions for the project team. The first question is about, you said the patients come from Stanford, but do we, does your demographic bring, are we sure that people within San Jose will actually benefit from the program? That is, where do the patients come from, are they self-selecting, are they being sent down from Palo Alto?
That's a great question, and they come from all of the above. So people self-select, people will look online, they'll Google us, they will ask their neighbors, they'll ask their clergy, they'll ask their professionals, their doctors, so they'll come from that direction. Family and friends, people we've served before, is one of our biggest referral parties, but geriatric care professionals, others in the field that have, make a living at helping people find placement for them, they will send people to us as well. And we also then have the professionals at the Stanford and the other locations that will send us people. So we'll get people out of the area too. Vast majority will be from a fifteen-mile radius, so that's our primary circle of service. And because we're a destination that takes care of the most complex, difficult cases, that's why we get the Santa Cruz, the Monterey, you know, those kinds of people driving all the way up to find a placement in our community that will get people walking who couldn't walk again, get people, you know, able to feed themselves independently again, all things that scientists, before we started, thought was impossible, because a third of the brain is gone by weight and volume end of life with Alzheimer's, it's a clinical fact. And they didn't think you could recover those abilities once you lost them, but we have tens of thousands of cases to prove the opposite. Majority of people will be right here, from the greater San Diego, San Jose market, sorry.
So I don't want to ask about your financial model, but is it all private pay, or?
Yes, yes, it's all private pay. There are no government dollars that come in to play. We cooperate with the guide program, which is a CMMI initiative, that does help a little bit. We work with the VA, we work with other supplemental sources that people, depending on their history, they may qualify for. We take long-term care insurance, so about twenty-five percent of our population has long-term care insurance.
Thank you. One more question, and this is on the employee side. You're operating twenty-four-seven facility, where are your employees coming from?
A great question, where are the employees coming from? They're coming from the local market, and we do a lot of training of our associates. So our program I described to you that's been accredited, that's a twenty-hour-plus program that you test out of. So we train everybody in our community, so everybody is, they're there for number one, to take care of our residents, number two, they do the dishes, or they do the laundry, or they, you know, housekeeping, or clearly caregiving and nursing. So each one of them is trained to know the difference between, you know, frontal temporal lobe dementia and how you approach someone versus somebody who has Alzheimer's disease, when someone is having challenges, how you redirect them, you don't go to medications, you don't go to restraints, you don't send them out to the ER, you take care of them in a way that is dignified, and when you, when you see our community at work, and I saw, there's one social worker who is also a senator in Sacramento, that observed what we were doing at lunchtime, queuing people to feed themselves, as opposed to feeding them. She said, "This is like a symphony where the caregivers are the orchestra, conductors", you know, and it's, it's an incredible thing to see it, because if you don't have the trained staff, you don't, and the physical plant lends itself to this too, because many, many barriers found in normal physical plants will create negative behaviors that will result in, in people saying it's their Alzheimer's disease or the others that are causing these behaviors, needing to give them medications or send them to the psychiatric hospital, when in fact it's the environment of untrained staff, of an environment that won't let them have freedom to live and choices, that creates those behaviors. So it's, and when Doug talks about it being a prosthetic device for the memory impaired, the building that is, it is, it's just like a crutch, and...
One more question? Thank you for that, but the ratio of patients to employees?
We have point nine-five full-time equivalents of forty-hour-a-week person per resident, the highest in the industry. And on top of that, we have highly skilled people, so twenty-four-seven licensed nurses in that community, always. And we have a master's-level social worker, and we have a very rich engagement program, and departmentally, we have differences of staff, so if somebody does culinary, there's somebody does house- of staff. So if somebody does culinary, there's somebody does housekeeping and maintenance. We're not asking caregivers to do culinary, housekeeping, maintenance, or run to the store.
Thank you very much. So speaking as the daughter of an Alzheimer's patient in Ivy Park in Milpitas, and recognizing the, the amount of care that it actually takes to support the people in our community, I absolutely support what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Bickford.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any additional hands here, so if there's no further discussion, we will move on to a vote. As a reminder, the motion on the floor is to approve the staff recommendation made by Vice Chair Cantrell with a second from Commissioner Oliverio. First up to vote is Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Brocio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bendal.
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lardonwa.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's nine yes, zero no. So the motion passes. All right, we will now move on to tonight's public hearing. We have two items on the agenda for tonight's hearing. The first is CP 23-016, V 24-001, and ER 20-219, which is a conditional use permit to allow the removal of 79 trees for the construction of two single-story data center buildings at 1657 Alviso-Milpitas Road. Staff, do we have a presentation for this item?
Yes, we do. Let me pull it up on the screen. Okay. Good evening again. Cameron G., planning project manager for this item as well. I'll first go over the project site, which is located north of State Route 237. There's two parcels that are shown on the screen. The easterly parcel, which is currently vacant, is approximately 64.59 gross acres. The data center buildings and associated utility facilities will be constructed on this easterly parcel. And then the westerly parcel is currently occupied by the San Jose-Santa Clara Regional Wastewater Facility and Silicon Valley Advanced Water Purification Center. Some off-site improvements that I'll go into detail more will be located on this westerly parcel. The general plan, land use designations for these parcels is industrial park and public quasi-public, and then both parcels are within the LI Light Industrial Zoning District. So here's some information about the project components. The project includes a conditional use permit for the construction of two single-story data center buildings, which total approximately 397, 2,000, sorry, 397,205 square feet, and the construction of associated utility facilities which support the data center building. These include an electrical substation, sanitary sewer pump station, storm drain pump station, water storage tank, and 224 standby backup generators. The project also includes the removal of 79 trees, which include 35 ordinance and 44 non-ordinance-sized trees. And then some off-site improvements include the relocation of the existing approximately 1,440-square-foot Valley Water Purification Visitor Center, which is located on that easterly parcel I previously mentioned, sorry, westerly parcel I previously mentioned, and then various other off-site improvements, which include widening Zanker Road and establishing new utility connections. The project also includes a development exception, which allows a reduction in vehicle parking by 63 spaces. This project was submitted prior to the current parking standards, and so the project at the time required 185 parking spaces. A parking study was conducted, which analyzed two existing data centers in Santa Clara and their parking usage, and the parking study concluded that a data center of this size would need to provide 92 vehicle parking spaces to meet peak demand. This project provides 122 vehicle parking spaces exceeding that calculated peak demand. The project was reviewed for consistency with the envisioned San Jose 2040 general plan, the Alviso master plan, the San Jose municipal code, the riparian corridor policy study, and council policy 6-34 for the riparian corridor protection and bird-safe design, the industrial design guidelines. Again, this project was submitted prior to the adoption of the current citywide design standards and guidelines, and so the industrial design guidelines do apply to this project. The project was also reviewed for consistency with the California Environmental Quality Act, as well as council policy 6-30 for public outreach. I'll now hand it over to the environmental project manager, Tina Garg, for a summary on the environmental review process.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Tina Kirk, and I'm the environmental project manager for the San Jose Data Center Project. This project EIR was certified on July 13, 2022, by the California Energy Commission as the lead agency for the project. The intent and purpose of the 2022 FEIR, final EIR, was to provide project-level environmental review under CEQA and to demonstrate that the project would not result in any substantial adverse impacts on the environment or energy resources, thereby allowing the California Energy Commission to approve the small power plant exemption and exempt the project from its certification program. Because it was found exempt, the California Energy Commission has no further permitting authority over the 20, over the project. Accordingly, the City of San Jose has the land use permitting authority and is the responsible agency for purposes of CEQA. Since the final EIR was certified, modifications to the project were proposed for supporting roadway improvements and utility infrastructure at the behest of the city as a responsible agency and local land use agency. And the project applicant also proposed modifications to certain components of the proposed data center facility, such as pump station, water storage tank, reduced substation footprint by retention basins, increased soil remediation, prolonged construction schedule, lighting design measures. The city, acting as a responsible agency under CEQA, prepared an addendum to the San Jose Data Center Project final EIR, which evaluated the environmental impacts of the proposed modifications. Updated air quality, biological resources, hazards, and VMT analysis was prepared to support the addendum findings. The addendum concluded that implementation of the project would not result in new or more severe significant environmental impacts, not considered in the prior certified final EIR, and that no revisions to the EIR or new mitigation measures would be needed, other, other than those identified in the previously certified EIR by the California Energy Commission. Therefore, the staff identified addendum as the correct CEQA pathway for the project. Thank you, and I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tina. So now I'll go over the staff recommendations for this project. Staff recommends that the planning commission take the following actions: adopt a resolution certifying the addendum prepared for the previously certified San Jose Data Center Final Environmental Impact Report prepared by the California Energy Commission, and adopting the related mitigation, monitoring, and reporting plan as a responsible agency in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act as amended, and adopt a resolution approving, subject to conditions, a conditional use permit to allow for the relocation of an existing approximately 1,440-square-foot Valley Water Purification Visitor Center, and the removal of 79 trees, 35 ordinance-size, 44 non-ordinance-size, and 273 replacement trees for the construction and operation of a data center with ancillary office use, as well as related on- and off-site improvements consisting of two single-story data center buildings totaling approximately 397,205 square feet, an associated electrical substation, sanitary sewer pump station, storm drain pump station, water storage tank, 224 standby backup generators, surface parking lots, and a development exception to allow a parking reduction on approximately 64.5 gross acre site. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. We will now turn it over to the project applicant for a five-minute presentation. And if you could just say your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the planning commission. My name is Jonathan Noble, Senior Director for State Government Affairs for Microsoft, based here in Silicon Valley, where we have over 10,000 employees. One of the investments we are making in this valley is around digital infrastructure. We are currently one of the largest providers of digital infrastructure to individuals and organizations in California, and that involves several facilities. This will be our first owned, built, and managed facility in the South Bay, and we're very excited to get started. We have been working on this project for a number of years. In fact, the original project was passed way back in 2017. The vision for data centers out in this property, in this area of San Jose, date back to 91. We are really in a position to get moving, and we're really hoping to, for your approval, to get started here later today. One is, I think staff did a great job presenting the project. We are here for any questions. So with that, I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open the floor to public comment. First up, we have Rigo Gallardo from Carpenter's Local 405, followed by Mike Sodergrin from PAC SJ. Feel free to come down to the podium at this time.
Good afternoon, Chair, Tordeos, and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Rigo Gallardo. I'm a field representative with the NorCal Carpenters here in San Jose, Local 405. I'm here to speak about the 1657 Alviso-Milpitas Road project, Microsoft upcoming data center. This is a great project that has the potential to bring hundreds of good-paying jobs to the South Bay, and we're excited to see this kind of investment in our community. But this project can be even better if Microsoft, well, Microsoft has the opportunity to raise the standard by hiring a responsible contractor, one that pays a livable wage, provides health care, and partners with the state-accredited apprenticeship program. That kind of contractor ensures that young men and women from this area are given the pathway to a meaningful long-term career in the trades. On behalf of Carpenter's Local 405, I'm here to extend my hand to Microsoft. We're ready to work with, with your team to make this a model project, one that not only builds world-class infrastructure, but also builds up our local workforce. Thank you.
Thank you.
So why would the Preservation Action Council come and talk to you about a data center that's not knocking down a historic building? The answer to that question is, last night, city council, under the Innovative Project Pathway Program, proposed two West Bank proposals to build a data center with housing. These data centers are 10 stories and 12 stories tall. They provide over 2,000 housing units, and they have a program to reuse the heat generated by cooling data centers. It's very innovative. The mayor and the council unanimously, unanimously approve that. I love Microsoft. I, my life is banking on the fact that they're going to store the data that I have on their cloud. But I would say that it's very late in the game, but I would challenge our friends at Microsoft to build housing with this project and go vertical instead of having on a 64-acre site the equivalent of what West Bank is proposing to do on, on less than three acres. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all of the cards that I have for this item. If there's any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item, feel free to come down to the podium at this time. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone move forward. So with that, we will turn it back over to the project applicant for an additional five minutes of closing remarks, if you have anything to add.
Thank you very much. Do we have another public comment?
Apologies for a different item.
Thank you. We have a project labor agreement with many of the trades in place for this project. We look forward to working with the carpenters to further kind of our efforts. We are committed to being a good employer here, not only during construction, but beyond. As it relates to changing direction of this site, clearly we have been working on this for a long time. The site is envisioned for light industrial, has been since 1991. Proximity to any number of uses makes residential here a little bit more challenging. So looking forward to, moving forward with this project.
Thank you. And with that, we will turn it back over to the commission for discussion. We will get things started with Vice Chair Cantrell, followed by Commissioners Oliverio, Bickford, and Lardonwa.
Actually, I have a question for the applicant. I'm just curious, this probably has no impact on the project, to be quite honest, but it is a very large site.
Yeah.
Are there any other plans for, for the site? I'm sure this building doesn't take up 64 acres.
So we are using the majority of the site for this data center. It is very efficiently designed. It is done so to maximize opportunities to be as sustainable as possible. This building will be designed to be lead gold. In addition, we are next to the Coyote Creek, which requires significant setbacks, and we're also encouraging a great deal of riparian area as well as bio-retention facilities to make sure that we are not impacting any of the infrastructure out here. So the combination of setbacks from the creek, making sure this building is as efficient as possible, and then being sensitive to overall sustainability goals has resulted in this design as proposed.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm, I'm really glad to hear that you have agreements with labor and intend to move forward. Thank you.
All right, next up is Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you, Chair. I know, this has been a long time in planning, and these data centers are obviously extremely important, and I would tell you that it's actually part of national defense at this stage. So I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Oliverio with a second from Vice Chair Cantrell. We will continue the discussion with Commissioner Bickford.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for you. The first one is, I'm assuming this facility will operate 24/7. Can you tell us a little bit about the number of employees per shift?
Absolutely. So this will be a 24/7 facility. This facility is anticipated to have approximately 60 employees during the day, 40 employees over, in two different shifts, 40 employees each during two different shifts, kind of over the swing period. So a total of about 140, but no more than 100 employees onsite at any given one time. And...
Have you thought at all about public transit or other ways to get people to this facility? Because I, I am the Commissioner for District 4. This is smack in my district, and Zanker Road is not optimal. You're going to be dealing with all the trucks going back and forth to the dump and the water treatment things during the day. So I'm curious if you've talked to the city at all about how you're going to get your workers back and forth.
Absolutely. As part of this project, we have implemented a TDM plan that the city has reviewed. It includes multifaceted approach to that piece of the puzzle. One, looking at leveraging public transportation where possible, looking to take advantage of swing shifts where possible. The other piece that will be really important for us, and I think for the city as well, is that there's over $65 million worth of off-site infrastructure improvements as part of this project, including a widening of Zanker. So Zanker, up until the Valley Water Treatment Facility, will be four lanes, expanded one lane in the east direction, will include pedestrian, walkways, large pathways. There'll be some bike infrastructure rebuilt, as well as expanded as part of this project. So we are definitely thinking about how do we make sure that we are being as sensitive as possible to some of those traffic concerns.
The, the other question that I have is, that plot of land has some, I'll call them ecological supports in the area. It is, I, when I drive by there, I see hawks and all sorts of birds on the Pacific Flyway. And have you made any arrangements to support the environmental impact that taking away that much land is going to do in that area?
So as you know, the site was farmed for a number of years. We, that's part of the reason why we're being so sensitive to the riparian corridor area, is to make sure that we are in a position to preserve the habitat there. To the degree that we are removing trees on part of the site, we are planning on putting back in 273 trees. So we're definitely kind of focused on that area. The other piece, as we've talked to our friends at Audubon and some of the other environmental organizations, they're actually excited about data center uses. Because relatively speaking, they are as quiet and as undisruptive as any use for a site in this part of the city. So... So no glazing, et cetera. So we feel very confident about what we're proposing, and it's definitely something we're sensitive to.
One more question, and I promise I'll give the floor back. 225 generators. Do you have plans for quieting them? I know it's not a very populated area, but 225 generators is a lot. Heaven forbid they should have to be used fairly often. I'm assuming you'll have some kind of a rotating testing, and they will need to be on sometimes. So how do you dampen the noise?
Sure. So one, we build these sites with sound dampening systems around the generators themselves, their screening, et cetera. We also use generators that try to, well, all these generators will be meeting the requirements of the city from a sound perspective. In addition, we do employ some of the strategies that you just mentioned in terms of rotating them, not firing them all off at once. They are strictly regulated by the Air Quality Management District, so we've got a lot of steps in place to really minimize the impacts of these generators. From an emergency perspective, we find that they are in use less than 0.1% of the time. So it's very, very rare that we actually need to use all of them at once, but it is something that we are sensitive to when we're testing, et cetera, as well as on those rare occasions where we do have to use them all.
And one last thing. I would like to see Microsoft do something to beautify the building, make it appealing to people as they're going by. We're giving up open space, and so I know that sometimes they'll put murals or, you know, things that are interesting to the community. You might engage with the community and try to figure out how to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I also had one quick question for the project applicant. Just given the scale of the building and of the site itself, were there any explorations of potential for onsite renewables or solar generation capacity?
So we always look at the best way to bring carbon-free energy to these sites. We have made a pledge to be carbon-negative by 2030, and that requires some aggressive planning as well as a lot of investment on our part. A big part of the way we do that is actually partner with our energy providers, San Jose Clean Energy, PG&E, and others, to make sure that we are utilizing and sourcing carbon-free energy, whether that's from solar or what have you. The reality that we find on our projects is that kind of onsite solar generation barely powers lights in the small part of the administrative building, and so we are really looking for solutions at scale to meet our energy use at scale. That means we're investing in solar, industrial solar-scale developers throughout California and throughout the western region. So we are definitely looking for those 100% non-carbon energy sources. Sometimes the onsite solutions just aren't the way to get there.
Thank you. Very glad to hear that you will be looking at, you know, carbon-free energy sources. I think, given the increased interest that we are seeing in data center construction here in San Jose, and the fact that we know that these facilities use a substantial amount of energy, it might be interesting at some point for the city to circle back and see if it makes sense to have any specific policies around, you know, making these facilities as efficient and environmentally friendly as possible, whether that is a commitment to clean energy usage onsite, or things like we're seeing with the West Bank proposal with capturing waste heat. Thank you. I don't see any other hands here. Was there any other discussion on this item? Okay. With that, we will move on to a vote. As a reminder, the motion on the floor is from Commissioner Oliverio, with a second from Vice Chair Cantrell, to approve the staff recommendation. We will get things started with Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Brocio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bendal.
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lardinois.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's nine yes, zero no, so the motion passes. All right, we will move to the second item on tonight's public hearing, which is H24-034 and ER24-165, which is an appeal of the Planning Director's approval of a site development permit for the construction of a 15-story, 100% affordable mixed-use building of 220 units on the northwest side of West Williams Street. Staff, do we have a presentation for this item?
Let me share my screen first. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I am Angela Wong, project manager for this file. This is an appeal of the Director's approval of file number H24-034, a site development permit to allow the partial demolition of a city landmark and the structure of Mary, and the total demolition of a third building for the construction of a 100% affordable 15-story mixed-use building consisting of up to 220 units and approximately 3,320 square feet of ground-floor commercial space on an approximately 0.5-gross-acre site. And the project also includes a state density bonus request for two concessions and seven waivers from various development standards. And as you can see from the screen, the site consists of three parcels bounded by South First Street, South Market Street, and West Williams Street. The middle parcel contains a city landmark building, and to the north of the city landmark building is a structure of Mary. Because the project includes modification to a city landmark, a historic preservation permit is also required. Let me go to the next page.
Can you do the presentation?
Huh? I'm sorry.
Present.
Oh, okay. Sorry. And a little background of the project. So a larger-scale project was approved at the same site in 2016, which included 25 stories, 300 units, and 5,000 square feet of commercial space. The approved permits for that project have expired, and under the current applications, the applicant has modified the project to be significantly smaller in scale than the previously-approved project, but maintains a similar design. And similar to the 2016 project, the current project will maintain the facades of the city landmark and the structure of Mary, and there will be minor alteration to the South Market Street facade of the city landmark building. And the project would also include historic exhibition space accessible from South First Street and a historic window display integrated into the South Market Street storefront. The subject site has a general plan land use designation of downtown, and this land use designation supports a variety of uses, including residential and commercial, and allows a density of up to 800 units per acre and a floor-area ratio of up to 30. The project includes residential and commercial uses with a density of 440 units per acre and a FAR of 11.5. The proposed use density and FAR are consistent with the downtown general plan land use designation. Although the project is not fully consistent with certain general plan historic preservation policies, the project is consistent with the general plan, major strategies, major land use policies, and housing policies because it aligns with the goals of the overall downtown densification, job, and housing. The site development permit conforms with all the development standards of the downtown primary commercial zone industry with two density bonus concession requests. And the site development permit is also consistent with all the applicable downtown design guidelines with two design exception requests due to the site configuration, and seven density bonus waiver requests as analyzing the staff report. And the project went to the Historic Landmark Commission for a recommendation on the historic preservation permit on February 5th. The Historic Landmark Commission recommended denial the historic preservation permit because there was insufficient evidence to grant a hardship under historic preservation ordinance of the municipal code. On February 26, the Planning Director approved both the site development permit and the historic preservation permit. On March 10, the site development permit was appealed by Steve Cohen, whose property is within 1,000 feet of the project site. Because the appeal doesn't include the historic preservation permit, the historic preservation permit has become final. Some of the appellant's comments are related to the historic preservation permit. Since the historic preservation permit has become final, no discussion or consideration is needed for those comments. The rest of the appellant's comments are related to the project design and general plan conformance. And regarding the project design, as outlined earlier, the project design is similar to the 2016 project. The project will maintain the facades of the historic buildings and would incorporate the storefront design at the pedestrian level with the same color and materials as the 2016 project. And the upper floor steps backs four feet from the ground-level facades along South First Street, same as the 2016 project, which was actually recommended by the Historic Landmark Commission in 2016 during the design review and early referral process. The current downtown design guidelines require a five-foot step back due to historic adjacency. However, the applicant has applied a state density bonus waiver request to waive this design standard. And as discussed in the staff report, although the project is not fully consistent with some historic preservation policies, the project is still consistent with most of the general plan, major strategies, and major land use policies and goals and housing policies. And in addition, the Housing Accountability Act limits local agencies' ability to deny housing projects for very low, low or moderate-income households. Per the Housing Accountability Act, the local agency shall not disapprove such projects unless any of the six findings under subdivision D of the California Government Code, Section 65589.5, can be made. And as analyzed in the staff report, none of the six findings can be made. Specifically, the city has not, the first finding is that the city has not met or exceeded its share of the regional housing need allocation for any income category in the current cycle. The project would not result in a specific adverse impact on public health or safety. The project is not in violation of any specific state or federal law. The project site is not zoned, is not zoned for or bounded by agriculture uses. The project is consistent with the downtown general plan land use designation, and the project complies with the zoning ordinance with the two concessions being granted. The project was deemed complete in July 2024 after the housing element was adopted in January 2024. So because none of the six findings can be made, the city shall not disapprove this project. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission deny the appeal and uphold the Director's decision to approve this site development permit. This concludes the staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. We will now move on to a five-minute presentation from the appellant, Steve Cohen.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to just go over briefly what I've got. I disagree with a lot of the findings of the city, and when they say there's not an adverse effect on public health and safety, when you put a building of this size with minimal setbacks into an area that is known as an entertainment district and a art district, it doesn't fit. And that, to me, is horrific. Basically, they're given a financial hardship claimed by the developer. Last year, the developer made $4.7 million in annual revenue. They've got 39 employees, and they left all the commercial space, which is totally usable, unrented since 2016. I do not understand why there's a financial hardship, and that's one of the reasons that the Historic Landmarks Commission felt that it should be denied. The old project is 25 stories. This project is 15 stories. They're saying that the projects are the same. So then you're telling me that if you have a 15-story project and you add 10 more stories on it, it's the same project? I don't think so. They've got, they went from 300 units to 220 units. So we're giving up 100 units of some of prime location in sofa because they're claiming financial hardship and they're making it all affordable housing. To me, if we have a housing shortage, which I think everybody agrees we do, then we should be maximizing the amount of housing on the space and not minimizing it for a developer that's claiming hardship. And for Core Development to claim a hardship when they have hundreds of million dollars of property, I can't get my hand, my mind past that. They're also going from 5,000 square feet of commercial space to 3,300. So not only are we not getting housing, we're not getting commercial space, which we need to generate money for the city, and again, because they're claiming financial hardship. It doesn't make sense. The Herald Building that they want to take out actually is eligible for the National Historic Register. So it's a crime to lose that building, and I don't believe in facadeism. Keeping the front of a building and tearing everything else out that has the historic meaning doesn't make any sense. And the Herald College could also be a destination which this city is desperate for, right? So we have groups like Nvidia, that's there's something to see and somewhere to go. So we're going to be losing that. The little modification that they want to do, putting a couple of displays from the Historic Museum is pitiful. They have 89 parking spots as part of this project. They don't have to have any parking spots. If they got rid of the parking, they can possibly save the landmark, right? We're giving up 89 spots, and we're having 89 spots to give up a landmark building. Doesn't make any sense to me. You know, the other side of this is that it doesn't conform many ways in the general plan, and that hopefully was put in your packets. I'm not going to go through that. You know, finally, the skin of the building is not compatible to the neighborhood. This was also verified by the Historic Landmarks Commission. The four-foot setback in the front is horrific compared to everything else that is in the neighborhood right now, you know? And they have these gray metal bypass panels on the building with aluminum and glass. It just, it doesn't fit. It's not supposed to match the existing historic structures, but it should fit in some way, you know, to keep the elements of sofa and the existing buildings alive and not bury it. This 23-story building with four-foot setbacks and the design and what they're using on the skin just takes away from everything else that's supposed to make this neighborhood important and a destination spot. And that is, I believe, everything I have. You know, so, yes, sorry. Finally, there's an abundance of affordable housing, and we've got more in the pipeline. I've tried to find out what...
Thank you. You will have an additional five minutes, but for now, we will go to the project applicant for a five-minute presentation.
There we go. Good evening, Chair Tordeos, members of the Commission. My name is Eric Shaynow, and I represent the core companies, the landowner and applicant tonight. I'm Joe. I'm joined in the audience by the president of the core companies, Chris Neal, and Aaron Barger, who's the project manager for the core companies on this project. The core company's Gateway Tower project will get a new high-rise built at South First, South Market and William Street in downtown. The, the planning director already approved this project and the planning staff tonight recommend upholding that director's approval. Why? Because building a high-rise residential tower is consistent with the vision of the general plan to build intensity in the downtown. It's consistent with the requirements of the housing element to significantly boost housing production in our city. And it's consistent with the downtown strategy plan to have urban mixed-use development in the downtown core area. The project has already been approved twice, as the staff has indicated. The initial version was approved in December, by the city council in December of 2016. But that project actually has zero units because it never got built, because it could never get financing. So that's what we have today, zero units. But in order to secure financing today, to actually get the tower built, the current revised plan was approved by the planning director last month. Getting high-rise and affordable housing built in the downtown is a high priority for the city due to extremely high construction costs and challenges in the capital financing markets. There are currently no new high-rises, high-rises under construction in downtown San Jose. By rightsizing the Gateway Tower building, reducing parking and reconfiguring the units for affordable housing, the building will become eligible for affordable housing funds and tax credits. And in fact, the Santa Clara County has committed $64 million of county Measure A funds to this project. So if it doesn't get approved and it doesn't get built, the city of San Jose and downtown San Jose loses that $64 million. Another goal is to create street-level activity in the SOFA district. The Gateway Tower will be in the heart of the SOFA Arts and Entertainment District. A plaza with outdoor seating and landscaping will face William Street in the corner of First and Market Streets for a place for events and activation. And the ground floor of the building will include over 3,000 square feet of commercial space with the goal of providing a performing arts space for a local arts organization that would be consistent with the SOFA district. There will be an active lobby and amenity spaces along the South First Street pedestrian street. And facing First Street, there'll be a historic display to commemorate the Charles Doc Harold College that existed on this site. A key cornerstone of the project is commemorating the history that happened on this site. One of the buildings on the site is significant for its association with Dr. Charles Doc Harold, who pioneered California's first radio transmitter, but not really the construction or design or style of the building. It's about the activity on the site, not the structure itself. Charles Harold operated his second school and laboratory at this building. It was not the site of his broadcasting activities. So to maintain the feel of the historic building, the project will maintain the existing facades, which you see on the screen. So we're keeping the rhythm of the historic facades along First Street. And has been mentioned, in one of those facades facing Fourth Street, we will have a historic display to commemorate Doc Harold's college and his radio broadcasting activities throughout downtown San Jose. So for all of these reasons above, we hope that you find the project worthy of your support and we thank you for your consideration. And our team is available for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now turn it back over to the project, or sorry, to the appellant, Steve Cohen, for an additional five minutes of remarks.
Okay, so they've already admitted that they're not using, that not making full use of the space and the space is precious, right? We have a big problem with having enough land in the downtown area, especially in the downtown core, to build housing. Neal said that nothing has been constructed. Actually, the Fay Building is constructed within two blocks of this project and they're still finishing it and haven't gotten their final occupancy permits yet. So yes, there has been construction in the area. The high construction cost today, but we know how the market is. Boy, boy, do we know how the market is. It goes up and it goes down. So they waited to 2016. They can wait a little bit longer if that's what they need to, to make full use of the space and bring in maximum amount of housing. We're getting shorted by 100 units by what they're now proposing. They also said that the California first radio transmission is not very important. I think it's real important to California and to come up with a statement like that is ridiculous, which is why this property is eligible for the National Register. And finally, the facades are glass and aluminum. Rhythm has nothing to do with material and the material is not consistent with what should be used in a historic area to complement the buildings that are there, not copy them, but to complement them. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will now open the floor to public comment for this item. First up, we have Allison Sigalani from SV at Home, followed by Chris Shea from SJDA and Kat Angeloff.
Thank you. Good evening. Allison Sigalani, Director of Policy with Silicon Valley at Home, speaking in support of Gateway Tower. We ask the planning commission to deny the appeal and uphold the planning director's decision to approve the subject site development permit. Gateway Towers represents 220 new affordable homes that can help the city meet its affordable RENA obligations with 165 units for very low-income households and an additional 55 units of permanent supportive housing to help address the city's homelessness crisis. At the same time, the project activates the street with a well-designed plaza that, along with commercial space and an exhibit and facade that honor the history of the site, contribute to the growth and vibrancy of the SOFA district. The project is appropriately dense, which positions it well both to utilize the space and also to be competitive for sources of state and federal funding. We thank the staff also for their very thorough accounting of the project's conformance with the general plan, zoning ordinance, state density bonus law, and other council and city priorities and regulations. We also agree with staff's assessment that the Housing Accountability Act does not permit the city to deny the project's application for a site development permit. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Vice Chair, Planning Commissioners. My name is Chris Shea and I am the co-chair of the San Jose Downtown Association Advocacy Committee and on the executive board member of the SJDA Downtown Association. We respectfully come before you this evening to ask for this body to approve the Core Company's Gateway Project in our downtown SOFA district. SJDA represents over 2,000 businesses that thrive when downtown has more residents. We are likely one of the very few places you're hearing from in the Bay Area that are clamoring for more residents. Those future residents, those, we are excited to welcome a home to downtown. They are our residents, students, employees, and future neighbors. This project is especially important because of the affordable nature of these housing units. This project is in full alignment with all the SJDA goals for our downtown. We strongly support high-rise and affordable housing development in our downtown. This project is pegged at below 70% AMI. We have a well-known and respected developer bringing forth this application. Second, bringing foot traffic and economic activity to SOFA district. This is 220 housing units or 220 families, a great addition to our cultural hub and business district. Third, preserving local history through the thoughtful integration into the new structure. This is an incredible thoughtful project that weaves in San Jose's history and is a big net addition to the SOFA neighborhood and it proudly joins. Past city goals have indicated that we need to build substantially more units in downtown to accommodate the 15,000 desired additional residents. As you heard, or will hear more tonight, there are no new units added in the last year. We, we want to build faster, better, smarter, cheaper, and we need to welcome our new residents home to the Gateway. Thank you for your time. We advocate for support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Kat Angeloff, followed by Manuel Salazar from SV at Home.
Good evening, Kat Angeloff, San Jose Chamber of Commerce, here to express our strong support for the Core Company's proposal and urge you to reject the appeal before you tonight. The Core Company has been a longstanding member of the Chamber of Commerce. We're really proud to represent them. And I'd like to remind you all that they've built many homes in San Jose and the region, not just market rate homes, affordable homes that families need. And in that spirit, I'd also like to say, we really like this project. It's a great project. It should have moved forward before, when it was 25 stories. So on that, you know, access to affordable housing is really important. This is 220 units, 25% for formerly homeless. We know this is the population that most critically needs access to deeply affordable housing, so we urge your support on that front. But also, as Chris mentioned, the streetscape is really important, especially in the SOFA district. So we're really excited to see a more active SOFA district and this project will bring that. Thank you so much and we urge your support for the project and your reject of the appeal.
Hi. Good evening, members of the San Jose Planning Commission. My name is Manuel Salazar and I'm here on behalf of SV at Home to voice our support for the Gateway Tower project, 100% affordable, 15-story mixed-use development that will bring 220 affordable homes and 3,320 square feet of ground floor commercial space to downtown San Jose. That was mouthful. This project is bold and much-needed step forward for affordable housing in the urban core. It will serve low and very low-income residents at a time when our community faces an urgent need for deeply affordable homes. Despite challenging the own-development environment at the moment, this project is moving forward by using the state density bonus law to secure concessions, waivers that make the project feasible without sacrificing quality. These tools allow the developer to overcome design constraints and preserve affordability all within the compact half-acre site. The applicant has gone to great lengths to respect the site's history. The project preserves the historic facade of the city landmark, the Herald College, and includes interpretive displays and a historic window exhibit that honor San Jose's rich radio history. For those reasons, we urge the planning commission to follow the staff's recommendations and support the following actions. Conduct administrative hearing on the appeal and deny that the appeal and uphold the site development permit approval. Allowing this vital 100% affordable housing project to move forward would be probably the best course of action, in our opinion. This is exactly the kind of housing that San Jose needs, deeply affordable and thoughtfully designed. Please support this project and help deliver on the city's housing commitments. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all of the cards that I have up here. If there are, oh, if there are any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item, feel free to just come down to the podium at this time. Thank you.
Mike Sodogron, Preservation Action Council. Ordinarily, PAC would be pretty vehemently opposed to the demolition of a historic landmark. In this particular case, we have not opposed this when it was originally proposed in 2016 and we do not oppose it now, which is not necessarily a super-strong endorsement, but it's a recognition of the reality of trying to balance the need for housing with the need to preserve the unique characteristics of the city. We feel like the project does that. You know, we, we're not big fans of facadeism. We have challenged other projects that have come before us relative to hardship cases. The one thing I would say, although this is not something you're considering tonight, I would encourage the commission to have a conversation with, with staff about how do we have a formulaic approach to evaluate financial feasibility or infeasibility of a project? It's very unfair when the city directs an applicant to do a hardship case and doesn't really give them a template to do that. And it's also hard for the public to discern that. And the people that were charged with discerning this is the Historic Landmark Commission folks, right? Which had no training in this particular area for evaluating a pro forma balance sheet. P and L, sorry. The one thing I would say is that we're very encouraged with the commemoration that's proposed, as was originally proposed and as it's currently proposed. History San Jose is very much in favor of it, is very engaged in it. And we certainly are going to hold the applicant to this. I would say, I've had an interface with the appellant. He is, really cares deeply about SOFA. You should listen to his complaints because they're bigger than just this.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the audience tonight who'd like to speak on this item? If so, feel free to come down to the podium at this time. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else move forward, so we will turn it over to the commission for discussion. First up, we have Commissioner Young, followed by Commissioner Lardinois.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for our attorney first, actually. So my understanding is the historic significance of the building is not under discussion tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So with, with that aside, just, you know, want to make a couple of observations, one of which is the appellant's arguments are contradictory. On the one hand, he's saying that the building is too large for the site and inappropriate. And on the other hand, he's arguing that the building is smaller. So that really doesn't make a lot of sense to me. The project has already been approved twice, I believe. It's going to provide 220 units of 100% affordable housing, which we desperately need in the city. We're short of all kinds of housing in the city market rate as well, but we really need affordable housing. And I'm very encouraged by the folks who talked about actually getting some unhoused people in, into some of these units. You know, the, the argument that this would be a destination if we kept it, I don't buy that. I'm a big science history guy. I love science history, but I, you know, would not go to a city just to see this. But what I would do is if I'm down in this area and I see a nice presentation of the history of the site, I will stop and, and read that, much to my kid's dismay, right? I'll take 15 minutes and, and read it. So I think this is a wonderful project. I don't see any merit in the appeal, so I'm going to make a motion that we deny the appeal and approve the project.
Second. So we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Young, with a second from, I believe, Commissioner Lardinois. We will continue discussion with Commissioner Lardinois.
Yeah, thank you. So I agree with and echo everything that Commissioner Young said. I would also stop and read the whole thing. But, yeah, and so I, I want to point out, because I think maybe four of us were on the commission at the time, but in September and October of 2021, we heard another appeal from this appellant. That project was a 240-unit apartment building at 459 South Fourth Street. And the appellant owns an apartment building at 470 South Third Street. And I believe, from looking at a map, that they share a property line. And that appeal also raised a number of issues that I felt were irrelevant to the project at hand. And we denied that appeal. In addition to what Commissioner Young pointed out, the appellant told us that this project is both too dense and not dense enough. He also told us that there's a housing crisis, but that also we have enough affordable housing in San Jose. I mean, I don't mean to cast dispersions or, you know, declare someone else's motivations, but from both that past appeal and this appeal, I mean, the appellant is a landlord. I just get the impression that these are bad faith appeals because he doesn't want the competition. So I second the motion because I think we should move forward with this project. Thank you.
We'll go over to Vice Chair, Kentrell.
Actually, this is either for the developer or staff. Do we have a breakdown of the affordable units? At what level of affordable and how many units?
Is your question about the affordability? It is, let me check very quick. I believe it's to very low-income households.
How many? 100% very low? Okay.
Give me a moment, sorry.
Actually.
Feel free to approach.
Yeah, that's fine.
Chair Tordeos, member of the commission, Eric Shea now. The, the proposal to secure funding is to provide housing between 30% AMI and 70% AMI. funding is to provide housing between 30% AMI and 70% AMI. However, in addition, 25% of the units are going to be used for rapid rehousing to get homeless people on the right track. That's considered 30%, but the reality is some of those folks might be 0%. So that's the range. And it's a good range because we have a problem with homeless people on the streets. We need to get them off the streets. At the same time, we have thousands of service workers in downtown, hotel workers, restaurant workers, who can't afford to live downtown. And at that range, 30% to 70%, that is your typical service worker in our city. Depending on household size, you're talking about incomes from $35,000 to $90,000.
Thank you. Actually, that's that's really important to know. I think specifically my concern was that it would actually help folks who work downtown live downtown, specifically in those service jobs. Makes perfect sense. And at that level, especially rapid rehousing, which is amazingly important, I mean, just so important to our communities. I just don't see how we could ever turn down a project like this. While I really respect and appreciate the appellant's decision to to bring this forward and your rationale, I get it, I understand. But this is this is key, key to the survival of people in our community. So I will definitely be approving that, moving forward with the project and declining the appellant's appeal.
Thank you. You know, I've been following this project for about seven years now, and I live off of William Street, about five blocks from this site. So I walk past this building all the time. I'm very excited to see it moving forward. You know, yes, do I wish it was still, you know, 10 stories taller, of course. But I would point out to the concerns around density that this still pencils out to about 440 dwelling units per acre, which would make it still one of the densest buildings downtown. And at least in my knowledge, the densest 100% affordable housing project that I've seen developed in San Jose in recent years. So I will be enthusiastically supporting this project. Can't speak highly enough of the rapid rehousing component here and the importance of getting that additional capacity. And I think this will also be great to just provide more foot traffic in the sofa district to support all of our local businesses and cultural institutions there. So I will be enthusiastically supporting. Do we have any other comments from commissioners before we move to a vote?
You know, for the applicant, I know this is a sort of the sense of urgency to restructure this so something can move forward. Can you highlight, if you can, the reality of when you think funding might come to you outside of what the county's providing? I mean, are we looking at breaking ground maybe, I don't know, summer 2027? And are we, I assume we're not relying on federal funds in today's day and age?
There won't be federal funds. That's true. But state and county funds. And so the terms of these programs, we actually have to work very fast because we have to commence construction by January 2026.
Okay.
Yeah. And in fact, we have at risk had to advance the construction drawings to apply for a building permit already.
Good.
And we're going to submit those to the Building Department in May.
Great.
And because that's the only way we can commence construction by January 2026.
Great. Thank you so much. And and for staff on the non-denial, if the developer came back and said, I'm going to do three-story townhouses, all low-income, would the city have no right to deny that either? Because there's a clearly a difference in density in what you want in the downtown.
I don't think we could deny it. We don't have a minimum density, other than if someone tried to potentially do like a single-family home, which is allowed use. But if they wanted to do townhomes, which we do not recommend in our downtowns, it would be hard for us to deny, yes.
It would. That's so that's something we hopefully won't have to see. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any further hands, so we will move on to a vote. As a reminder, the motion is to approve the staff recommendation and deny the appeal made by Commissioner Young, with a second from Commissioner Lardinois. First up to vote is Vice Chair Cantrell.
I voted to decline petition from the appellant.
Thank you. Commissioner Barocio. Sorry, yes is to decline the appeal.
Yes to decline, yes.
Commissioner Bendal.
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford.
Thank you for clarifying the answer, yes.
Commissioner Lardinois.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario.
Yes to deny.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's nine yes, zero no's. So the motion passes. All right, that concludes tonight's public hearing. We will now open the general plan hearing, 2025, cycle one. There are no items on the general plan consent calendar today, so we will move directly into the general plan public hearing. We have two items for that section of the agenda. The first is GP 18-012, PDC 23-009, and ER 23-056, which is an assortment of city-initiated general plan amendments to change land use designations along Coleman Avenue. Staff, do we have a presentation for this item? Okay, thank you. And before this next item, we will take a brief five-minute break. The moment here. And staff, are we ready with that presentation?
Yeah, I'll pull it up right now.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Before staff begins our formal presentation, we are joined today by the Director of Aviation, Mookie Patel, who would like to say a few words about the project.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair. Thanks for having me here today. I'm Mookie Patel. I'm the Director of Aviation at San Jose Manetta International Airport. The general plan amendment and the rezoning before you tonight is really important to the airport. It enables the airport to pursue some commercial development, especially on some underutilized property along Coleman and Heading. Additionally, the project generates a new revenue stream that directly supports the airport's continued development and operations. It also supports much-needed sales tax revenue to support overall city services. This project holds quite quite a bit, this project holds tremendous value for both the airport and the city. The advancement of this project is complementary in nature to the adjacent property, the community uses of the redevelopment of Columbus Park. It also enhances safety, public safety with the compatible land use and directly complies with our FAA grant assurances that we've been challenged with in recent years. So if there's any additional questions, I'll be standing by. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mookie. My name is Laura Maurer, and I am the project manager for the general plan amendment, file number GP 18-012, and plan development rezoning, file number PDC 23009, for four non-contiguous sites along Coleman Avenue and West Heading Street. I'm joined today by Nu Nguyen, our environmental review planner for this project, and Ryan Shealan, senior planner for the airport department, who will co-present with me today. For a little background, the project in front of you, as mentioned, is for four non-contiguous sites. Site one and two are along West Heading Street, and site three and four are along Coleman Avenue. All four sites are owned by the City of San Jose and are vacant except for a parking lot on a portion of site three. The sites are all located just south of Manetta International Airport. Because of the close proximity to the airport, all four sites are located in the inner safety zone and within the city-modified airport influence area. The inner safety zone includes certain restrictions on uses and and development standards to ensure the safety of people and aircraft operations. Projects within the airport influence area are referred to the Airport Land Use Commission to determine conformance with the airport land use compatibility plan for the Manetta International Airport. There are two recommendations for your consideration for these four sites. The first is a proposal to change the envisioned San Jose 2040 general plan land use designation from open space, parkland, and habitat, and light industrial to combined industrial commercial. The second proposal is to propose, the second is a proposal to change from the no designation OS open space, LI light industrial, and R2 to family residence zoning districts to the OSPD Plan Development Zoning District. More details about these changes will be described later in the presentation after Ryan presents history and background on the project.
Thanks, Laura. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Ryan Shealan, Senior Planner, Airport Plan and Development. So I wanted to give a little bit of background and history on the project, talk about the Guadalupe Gardens and the FAA land acquisition program, just to orient everyone to where we are. We're immediately south of SJC Airport. The runways also south of Highway 880 in the Guadalupe Gardens, which is 120 acres of city-owned federally obligated property. It is part of airport property. And so you can actually see in the graphic here on the slide, the top right, the former Coleman Loop residential neighborhood. This dates back before my time to to the late 60s. And this area used to be formal, former residential neighborhood. And as the airport was growing into a commercial service airport, the start of the jet age, this was not suitable to have a residential neighborhood in the approach path for the airport. And so the city, working in conjunction with the FAA, developed a land acquisition program to purchase out all of the residential homes in this neighborhood. It was 625 parcels, 800 dwellings for noise compatibility purposes and approach zone protection. So that was over about 20 years from the 70s to the 90s. It was an $80 million program using both city funding at 20% and FAA grant funding at 80%. And so that leads us to the 2002 Guadalupe Gardens master plan that was approved by city council and the FAA. That's the graphic in the bottom right is kind of the ultimate vision for the Guadalupe Gardens master plan, again, directly south of the airport. So the master plan envisioned low-density, open-space recreational uses that were compatible in SJC's approach path, one of the one of the few things that were compatible at that point in time. The gardens is largely developed south of Taylor Street. And so just to orient everyone that's south of Columbus Park, if you're familiar with the area right by the airport, and south of Taylor Street, those uses include the Rotary Play Garden, the Historic Orchard, the Rose Garden. So there's quite a bit of development south of Taylor. North of Taylor and north of Columbus Park, that area has gone undeveloped for several decades, largely due to lack of city funding for projects out there and strict FAA requirement, fair market value requirements, which I'll I'll talk about more on the next slide. So unfortunately, that leads us, we're skipping ahead in time to the global pandemic and what's known as the FAA corrective action plan, sorry. and what's known as the FAA Corrective Action Plan, sorry, Federal Aviation Administration. You'll see some pictures there on the right of what it looked like during the pandemic. There was 200-plus on house encampments, again, on federally obligated city property. The FAA did issue a corrective action letter to the city and to the airport department stating that the airport was out of compliance with our federal grant assurances. Federal grant assurances, every time we take a grant from the FAA, there's basically a whole list of grant assurances that we need to comply with, including use of airport revenues to ensure incompatible land uses surrounding the airport. So in this case, the FAA considered these encampments residential use and what we just talked about on the last slide, on why we originally purchased the property, residential neighborhood's not suitable on the approach path. So the FAA did direct us to come up with a plan to... or directed the city to come up with a plan to fix, essentially come up with solutions for this area. And so the city responded with this corrective action plan, which would essentially vacate the encampments, return the property to compliance. Originally, we were going to fence off all the property. That was part of the plan. We brought that to City Council along with all of our partners, PRNS, Public Works, Police and Fire. And City Council directed staff to activate the Guadalupe Gardens, to discourage further encampments, but also to focus on the larger issue, you know, especially of homelessness in San Jose. So just bringing the airport up to compliance was not on the table. So essentially, what they recommended or directed was a refresh of the Guadalupe Gardens Master Plan, some more modern uses out there. There was a dog park, actually the largest dog park in San Jose, I believe, came online in 2023. And so after Council, again, the city, Airport Department is the lead, but with all of our counterparts, housing, City Attorney's Office, Police, Fire, PRNS, we did a phased debatement of the encampments and we had discussions between the city, including City Managers' Office, Airport Director, and the FAA, and we collaborated on a balanced approach to activate the property. So that approach was to waive the biggest barrier to doing projects out there and using the property. So to waive federal fair market value requirements to implement these low-density, open-space recreational uses. So that was part one of this balanced approach. Part two was to implement commercial development along Coleman Avenue and Heading Street to gain an additional source of revenue for the airport. So it was a trade-off, and I'm going to talk about exactly fair market value and what's known as community benefit in the next slide and explain that a little bit more. Okay, so with the FAA approval of this balanced approach, just to start off, what is community benefit? So the community benefit is, it's a specific term used in FAA policy in that it's defined as use of airport property for community purposes at less than fair market value. So it removes the FAA fair market value requirement to use the property in Guadalupe Gardens. So instead of, you know, in this case, we collaborate, the airport does, with PRNS, instead of requiring PRNS to pay into the airport fund because the airport's an enterprise fund, we can use this community benefit designation and allow less than fair market value or no cost to use the property. And so some of the things that the FAA included in this approval letter for conditions for granting community benefit status include exactly what I've been talking about. So this commercial development along Coleman Avenue and Heading Street for airport revenue generating purposes, to maintain the property as noise-sensitive land, right, we're right in the approach path, to activate the land to prevent future incompatible land uses, that is, you know, the same as Council Direction, to establish a parking time limit on Asbury to maintain land use compatibility, and that's mainly to not allow overnight parking and, you know, RVs to be out there so close in the approach path, and then also to continue to comply with all our FAA grant assurances. Okay, so that leads us to kind of the actual project, the Coleman and Heading Commercial Development Project. So we have been taking steps as the Airport Department to comply with this FAA letter and community benefit designation. The first part of that was we went through the formal FAA review process to determine what federal actions they had for this project. So federal actions, examples of those are approval of our airport layout plan, which depicts all of our runways, facilities, also the federal environmental review process, or NEPA. And so the FAA did determine that they do not have jurisdiction, they don't have those federal actions on this project. So basically, they approved us to continue to develop the project, will still comply with all of our federal grant assurances, and to also go through the normal, it's known as the FAA Part 77 airspace review process. Every project in downtown high-rises, everything goes through this airspace safety review for pilots, essentially. In addition, we've been working with planning, building code enforcement to prepare this General Plan Amendment rezoning and EIR for the commercial sites. Additionally, the airport separately is preparing a Guadalupe Gardens Master Plan Amendment to remove these project sites that are planned for commercial development, and that will go to City Council along with this item. A couple noteworthy items as this project does move forward with commercial development. The city will retain ownership of the land, so we're not selling it to a developer. We're, you know, we will have direct control, our airport property management team will lease out all the sites and enforce the multitude of restrictions in this area right off the approach end. We are working on a request for proposal for commercial development, anticipate it to advertise early next year. And this Plan Development Rezoning complies with, again, local, state, federal regulations. We're in an area where not only do we have the FAA regulations, we also have the County Airport Land Use Commission, which takes their direction from Califor... Caltrans Aeronautics, California State Law. And then we have all of our local regulations as well that we work with PBC on. So with that, I will turn it back to Laura. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Before you, on this slide, we'll be looking at the General Plan Designations for the site. The existing General Plan land use designations for Site 1, 2, 4, and most of Site 3 is open space, parkland, and habitat. This land use designation is intended for low-intensity uses like parks, habitat buffer, and permanent open space. The existing General Plan use designation for the rest of Site 3 is light industrial. This land use designation is intended for industrial use without hazardous or nuisance effects like warehouses, manufacturing, and wholesale establishments. The proposed land use designation for all four sites is combined industrial-commercial. This land use designation is intended for a compatible mix of commercial and industrial uses like those found in light industrial and other standard commercial or office uses. The proposed land designations are supported by many General Plan policies that support the creation of employment man, land because of the fiscal and job benefits. The existing zoning districts of Site 1, 2, 4, and most of 3 is OS open space. This zoning district is the conforming district for the open space, parkland, and habitat general plan land use designation and has the intended uses the same as the General Plan Designation. The existing zoning district for the rest of Site 3 is no-designation, light industrial, and R2 two-family residence. The areas with no-designation are areas where public rights-of-way were either vacated in the case of Emery Street or conditionally vacated in the case of University City Avenue. The light industrial areas mirror where the light industrial general plan land use designation resides and has the same intended uses. The R2 two-family resident area is a remnant of the prior uses of the site before the sites were bought by the city in the past and would have been rezoned as part of the city and initiated rezonings underway to comply with Senate Bill 1333 if it were not already part of a project. The proposed zoning district for all four sites is the OSPD Plan Development Zoning District. The base zoning district is open space, meaning that until a plan development permit is approved and effectuates the plan development zoning, the zoning for these sites will be OS open space. The zoning standards utilized for this plan development zoning district are a modification of the combined industrial-commercial development standards. The proposed zoning is supported by general plan policies because the custom zoning will address the unique safety considerations of this site due to the proximity to the airport. As mentioned earlier, the proposed OSPD Plan Development Rezoning is a modification of the combined industrial-commercial zoning district. The standard combined industrial-commercial zoning allows industrial and commercial uses like manufacturing, office, R&amp;D, retail, public eating establishments, vehicle uses, and more. The OSPD Plan Development Zoning District will limit those, the uses, to only those within the combined industrial-commercial zoning district that conform to the use standards of the inner safety zone, as well as adding many storage use, which is normally allowed in the light industrial zoning district. All the setbacks for the plan development zoning are the same as the CIC zoning district, except for along Walnut Street, where the front setback is zero. This is because while Walnut Street is an official right-of-way, functionally, it has not been used as a street and has been filled in with grass for some time. It may be used for a future right-of-way for the Airport Connector Project, and if not, will be vacated like other streets have been within Guadalupe Gardens. The maximum heights for the plan development zoning are restricted to the FAA airspace requirements to conform to the standards of the inner safety zone. Aerospace requirements differ for each site and differ on each parts of the site. The maximum FAR is also restricted to an FAR of .60 instead of 12 and adds a population density standard to conform to open space and density standards of the inner safety zone. Additionally, there are a few other restrictions to the... that are related to the standards of the inner safety zone, such as limiting uses and exterior lighting that can cause hazards to aircraft and prohibiting above-ground storage of fuel or hazardous materials. Lastly, a 50-foot Coleman reservation area was added along Coleman Avenue for Sites 3 and 4 for the future potential widening of Coleman Avenue. If the widening project is canceled, then the reservation area will no longer apply. And I'll now pass it over to Nuh, who will now present about the environmental impact report prepared for this project.
Thank you Laura, and good evening Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Nuh Nguyen with PBCE, and I will go over the environmental review that was done for the project. So the city prepared an environmental impact report for this project, which included the following milestones for the environmental review process. We first posted the notice of preparation on August 21st, 2023, and held a environmental scoping meeting on September 7th, 2023. The draft EIR was first circulated August 2nd through September 16th in 2024 and was recirculated on January 21st through March 7th, 2025 to include the notification to those who provided comments on the notice of preparation. Then finally, the First Amendment with responses to comments to the draft EIR was posted to the project environmental page on March 28th, 2025, and all commenters were notified of the posting. The environmental documents identified potentially significant impacts of the project related to biological resources, cultural resources, greenhouse gases, hazards, and hazardous materials, noise, and as well as transportation. But with the implementation of identified mitigation measures in the EIR, these impacts will be reduced to a less-than-significant impact. Next slide, please. The city received a total of eight written comment letters during the draft EIR's public circulation periods from various regional agencies, local orgs, and individuals. Comments raised concerned... Comments raised concerns regarding how there should be more measures to protect burrowing owls and nesting birds should be added, to which the city reiterated that the proposed mitigation measures in the EIR are adequate because they are based on Condition 15 of the Santa Clara Habitat Plan to ensure that direct take of burrowing owls do not occur. Regarding nesting bird protection, the city also added clarifying textual changes to ensure that the normal behaviors of nesting birds during project construction are guaranteed. And there is sensitivity for tribal cultural resources on the project site, and there are comments raised how there should be consultation with Native American tribes. The city had consulted with tribes pursuant to the requirements of Senate Bill 18 and Assembly Bill 52 during the preparation of the EIR. And the EIR also contained mitigation measures requiring future developers of the project site to collaborate with Native American representatives. There was also requests for textual changes made to the draft EIR, and so we made those to update water management-related maps, ordinances, and plans and permit information. There was also a request to prepare a local transportation analysis and travel demand management program. So currently, the project does not include any specific development proposals at the moment, but in future developments that are facilitated by the project, that when they come in, they will need to complete their own individual local transportation analysis. And in conclusion, these comments didn't result in any changes to the conclusions of the analysis in the EIR, and the response to comments and text edits to the draft EIR are included in the final EIR that was posted on March 28th, and all commenters were notified. I will now pass the presentation back to Laura.
Thanks, Nuh. We just wanted to add also that one comment from the public was received today, who opposed the rezoning and General Plan Amendment because of the loss of trees, loss of right-of-way access to the park, and loss of Guadalupe Garden park space. The EIR analyzed the project's potential impacts of trees, to trees and habitat. Future development proposals are required to implement standard permit conditions for tree protection and replacement. Mitigation measures are also required to ensure that nesting owls or birds won't be impacted. The project does not remove any active right-of ways and other active right-of ways access will remain. While the project does remove some land from the Guadalupe Gardens, the vast majority of Guadalupe Gardens remains. So from all of this information that is presented today, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council to approve for all four sites the environmental impact report, the General Plan Amendment, and the Plan Development Rezoning. Thank you for your time, and we are available for questions or comments.
Thank you. We will now open the floor to public comment for this item. I have one card here for Jordan Moldow, so feel free to come down to the podium. If there's any other members of the audience who'd like to speak on this item, you can also line up behind the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan Moldow, District 3. And I'm here because I'd like to suggest that the Commission reject the staff recommendations and keep the park the way it is. I'm super supportive of infill development, but I don't think taking away space from what I assume is our biggest park near downtown is the right way to go about it. And I'd like to, in particular, call attention to comment each in the EIR submitted by two individuals, Leslie Hamilton and Kathleen Muller. And it provides a lot of first-degree sources about the history of this rezoning proposal. And they have what seems to be a pretty good argument that the stuff about the airport usage and the fair market value is not as described. They attached a letter from Council that the City of San Jose had retained a number of years ago saying that the fair market value regulations don't apply in this case. Just for me personally, again, I think having park space is great. The Guadalupe Gardens Plan was approved by the FAA and the airport and all the other bodies years ago. They knew that it was going to be used for park space going into this. And I don't support the idea of changing our minds all of a sudden. And there's also the risk that they could change their mind again in the future and take even more land. I think if a compromise wanted to be established, I think redeveloping the small parcels is probably fine, but I think the big parcels along Coleman Avenue, I feel like they should really stay. And in that comment letter I referenced, they also talked about how the original plan was that that frontage on Coleman would be a gateway to the park. And so I really think that it should stay the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to provide comment on this item? Okay, not seeing anyone move forward, so we will turn it back over to the Commission for discussion, starting with Commissioner Oliveri. for discussion, starting with Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you, Chair. I attended your community meeting back in September 2023, and the, basically what I came out with it was that the city is under various obligations with the FAA, and essentially, you know, this is how the airport was proceeding. Would you say that's sort of a nutshell of it?
That's accurate.
Okay, thank you. And then you've, there's a fair amount of effort airport staff has put into this project, and as I look through the report, I see revenue 11 times, but I don't see any number. What modeling has the airport done to show the potential revenue?
So, we, we have not yet done any modeling for potential revenue. At this point, we have been responding to the global pandemic, FAA direction, city council direction to advance this project. As we move towards the RFP phase, that will be looked at closer with our property management team about potential revenue streams and potentially formatting similar to, to our tenants in the airport and a percentage of, of revenue from the tenants as well.
Got it. And then from your, since your airport domain expertise, what are the type of uses you see adjacent to the airport and other airports that you truly believe that this has a strong chance of becoming?
Yeah, great question. At a lot of airports, we see, we see similar uses like this of the grab-and-go, the take-out, the small, small coffee shop, some, some close stop. Also, there's a gas station already there, right as you get close to the airport. Our, our real goal here is when we hand-select it, the planned development rezoning uses, we comb through all the various restrictions, right? There's so many different restrictions. The biggest thing is that we want to ensure compliance with, basically, the density restrictions. We're not trying to have, you know, hundreds and thousands of people come to this site. We want to retain, basically, low-density, open-space-type uses adjacent, and also have uses that complement that with, with low density as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll go to Commissioners Bickford, followed by Vice Chair Cantrell, Commissioner Young, and Commissioner Rosario.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions. The, the diagram that was put up that, that showed where these parcels are had a couple of light industrials on the sort of wings of the, the larger plots. Can you explain why those are being left as light industrial? I don't, my mind map doesn't quite, it isn't quite understanding why those corners are left.
Are you talking about the ones within the site, or ones adjacent to the site?
Within the site.
So the ones within the sites are being changed. They are not being left as light industrial. The whole sites are being changed to combined industrial commercial?
So, so let me rephrase. The leftmost CIC purple on the right-hand diagram that has a corner that says light industrial?
Oh. Yeah, I think that is where the gas station is, so that is not part of the site.
Okay, thank you. The second question I have is, I, I think, I'm more concerned about the rest of this property where Asbury and all of the homeless encampments were, especially during COVID. I, I don't see that there's a, a strategy in here for actually protecting that, that open space and making it usable as parkland and, and for community, and, and so I'm curious if there's something that goes along with this that actually talks about the majority of the, the parkland space.
Yeah, great question. So, so that's the Guadalupe Gardens Master Plan Amendment, and that's essentially, what we're trying to do is, is re-envision that master plan and come back with some modern uses. So, the first part of that was there's already a dog park that's been built right adjacent to this commercial space. That happened towards the end of COVID. Additionally, for the rest of the space that's adjacent, there are concepts that are planned, such as disc golf and urban agriculture that we're working with our partners, PRNS and the Guadalupe River Park Conservancy. So there is a plan for, this, this is 40 acres total that we're talking about here. This property specifically that I mentioned in the presentation, this has sat fallow for 23 years. South of Taylor has been successful in activating all of the properties. So, really, our, our main goal here is, is that balanced approach with the FAA, right? If, if we, you know, we basically requested community benefit as, as the city, which should help move along those other open space uses by removing that requirement for PRNS or a nonprofit to have to pay the airport into our enterprise fund, so we're trying to remove those barriers. And at the same time, the second part of that balanced approach is the airport needs to get some revenue out of this too, because the FAA put in so much grant funding back when it was acquired.
Thank you. One, one last question, and, and it's just my lack of understanding of the fair market value conversation that we've had. Is it the airport that is giving something up, or is it the city that is giving something up in that fair market value?
Yeah, i- in this case, at airports around the country, the FAA would like to see the airport develop any unused land. So, so what, so what we attempted to do with this community benefit is, on behalf of the airport, this federally encumbered property, allow that to be developed in exchange for something else, right? It was basically a tit-for-tat. Did that answer your question?
Thank you. We'll go over to Vice Chair Cantrell.
I'm curious where the park conservancy, what they feel about this.
So, we work very closely with PRNS and the conservancy. We actually have a technical committee for the Guadalupe Gardens that meets on a quarterly basis. We've been working with the conservancy for 20-plus years. We are much more aligned than we were back in 2018, when parties were opposed, both the airport, PRNS, and the conservancy. So we work with them very closely, not only on this piece, but on the rest of the pieces in the Guadalupe Gardens, and we're probably at, at the best place we have, we have been with, and with the conservancy in 23 years.
Should I consider their absence here consent?
I, I don't know if I can speak on behalf of the conservancy, but they, they did comment on, and I'll take over your part. Well, I'll just mention, so they, they did comment on the NOP, and I think that they didn't comment on the draft EIR signified that we answered or addressed a lot of their questions that they were looking for. Did you want to add anything?
Okay. And so, just going back to the goal, I mean, it, it feels very piecemeal. What's the goal? Is the goal tax revenue? Is the goal moving the, the dime forward and, and having some other uses here? What's the goal?
Yeah, great question. The goal is to activate all this property, so we, we don't return to a situation where we're not in compliance with the FAA. So, a lot of large projects at the FAA rely on grant funding, and if we don't comply with our grant assurances, we essentially give that up, not just as airport, but as the city.
So, does that mean the goal is to block unhoused people from occupying the land again? Or what, is that part of the goal?
The goal is to ensure that there's compatible land uses in the approach path for the airport. So, this is one piece of the puzzle. We're working together as a city. We work with housing, we work with PRNS, to figure out the bigger picture. We're trying to bring the airport back into compliance with the FAA. That's, that's one step we're taking here.
The FAA requires that there not be unhoused people on the way.
Correct.
So is that the goal?
That's the current, that's the current goal, is to be in compliance with FAA.
Okay. I, I'm not sure why we're not saying that there's an elephant in the room. Seems like there's an elephant in the room.
So let me, let me answer it just a little bit differently. I think the goal is to not allow for housing of residents in the parcel of property that was originally purchased to eliminate housing that was under the approach path of the airport. So, a compatible land use that was initiated to, to change, which was, there was housing there. We, we removed that for the noise compatibility. What the FAA does not want is residents of any kind, temporary, in mobile homes, on, on RVs, or any of that type of activity to happen on that parcel. So, to allow this plan to move forward with a little bit of commercial, and then allow the conservancy to move forward with their development plans, is a, is a, is a, by, by, it's, it's a goal for both parties to achieve, if that makes sense.
Just not sure why we're not being transparent about the goal.
I, I believe the FAA is giving us guidance to eliminate further use of that property for, for any kind of housing, if it's temporary housing, unhoused housing, or, you know, transitory housing. And I'm not sure how to explain it any further.
Yeah, I get it.
That's what they're trying to eliminate.
It just seems like, you know, there was an elephant in a room, and the one's talking about it.
Yeah.
You don't want it to go back to that unintended use.
That's correct.
And you would like to block it by turning it into zoning it for some other use.
Part, part of it for, for this use, the remainder of it to make it into park property, parkland.
Got it. Just say that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll go to Commissioner Rosario, followed by Commissioner Young.
I just wanted to say that I, I'm really happy that these steps are taking, or moving forward. I drove past there today, and it reminded me of just how this piece of land, which you have to take to go to, Earthquakes Game, is just in disrepair, and it breaks my heart because I worked for Parks and Rec when I was a young kid, and I set up those baseball fields every single night after practice, and now they're just going to waste. So, please encourage Parks and Rec to put the baseball fields back if you have the opportunity.
So actually, just one comment on that. So, so Parks and Rec is redeveloping Columbus Park. They're actually finishing design right now, and that will, it's actually going to turn into brand-new soccer fields and, and some other uses. So, all of this is coming online at the same time and is complimentary.
That's great. And, and Commissioner Cantrell, I do understand the need for where, where homeless folks in our city are going to live, obviously.
For the record, I'm not opposed to doing this to, because that's not a permitted use, I get it, but I don't understand why we just don't say, this is what we're doing. To me, that, that lack of transparency makes people wonder if there's something else happening. That's all. Just be transparent.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Young, and then Commissioner Lardenwa.
Thank you, Chair. I'm confused about the FAA's role in, in this, because I noticed on page, on page eight, the, one of the FAA, I guess, conditions or requests was commercially-developed properties along Coleman Avenue and Heading Street for revenue generation. I guess my question is, and maybe this is really basic, why do they care? What, you know, why is that important to them?
Yeah, so that gets into a little bit of our business planning activities, of how we function as a city enterprise fund, and how we're obligated to grant assurances with the FAA. So, the FAA, their pure purpose and, and, I guess, governance over airports is to eliminate obstacles for obstructions for airway safety and operations of airfields. So, when they purchase this land so that we can eliminate noise barriers, or if there was housing that was compatible use and it was insulated, the FAA provides us grant dollars for that. So 80% comes from the federal government, local share, which is airport enterprise fund-generated funds, no, no general fund money. We still call it city funds, but they're airport-generated on property funds, is, is the matching dollar amount. So this, this builds a relationship with the FAA and the airport operator, which is myself and my team, to assure us that we don't do revenue diversion, that we, none of the property, none of the revenue that's generated on airport leaves the airport and goes to fund city services that aren't a, a part of the support services of the airport. Similarly, in this case, we still have to be self-sustaining, so our constant redevelopment of our airfield, our navigational aids, funding of, of pavement cracks and seals and things like that to support aviation, that 20% that we have to generate is their interest to make sure that the enterprise can continue to generate revenue so that it can support that 20% obligation to those projects. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yes, it does. You had made a comment, I'm sorry, the airport planner, I'm sorry, I missed your name, that the FAA in general wants vacant properties around airports to be developed. Why, why is that?
So, basically, if, if there's unused property that was purchased at one time for noise compatibility, if, right, things have changed over the past decades, especially with FAA regulations, whereas used to, they, they, in the past, they used to want to have a whole bunch of property, especially for airport approach protection if there should be an accident. As things have shifted over time, if you can put a compatible land use there, right, that it's not impacted by the high-noise environment, that's what they'd like to see. To Mookie's point, in that they...
Compatible, you're talking about compatible use?
Yeah.
So, any kind of land that's purchased with FAA funds, compatible land use is light industrial, non-housing, basically. Even if it's commercial use, it has to be not attractant to high density. It can't be a nightclub. It can't be a venue where we would have performances of, of any kind that would attract 100, 200 people, so heavy density. But their, their goal is constantly, is we, the federal government, provide funding to you through federal aviation tax dollars, you should maintain, the city's responsibility is to make sure that the enterprise fund can be self-sustaining at the end of the day. So, compatible land use can be hangars, it can be storage facilities, it can be garages for, you know, light, light industrial use, like people who manufacture certain products in, in warehouse spaces. So those compatible uses are good. There's certain non-compatible uses that are bad. So, nothing that would allow for overnight housing, or, you know, somebody to live above a, a shop or floor space. Does that help?
Yes, yes, it does. So is it fair to say that if we were not to approve this, or the council was not to approve this, that our FAA grant money would be at risk then for the airport?
Yes and no. It would go against a corrective action letter that would sort of unravel the, the conservancy's plan to develop the Guadalupe Gardens further. It would, it would be a grant violation at some stage of the conversation. I'd have to include the, the attorney's office to understand that more clearly, but I don't, I can't give you a clear answer today. But yes and no.
But it would, it would basically upset the conservancy's plan as far as the, the master plan for the Guadalupe Gardens, correct?
Well, just to be clear, it's, it's, it's the city's plan, it's the airport's and, and PRNS's plan. But, yeah, I, I don't think anyone would be happy if it didn't move forward, because then it's just going to sit fallow for another couple decades, and we're going to have the same challenges that we've had before. So before all the encampments, we had illegal dumping, we had a lot of illegal activities happening out there, abandoned vehicles and such.
Right, right. Okay. That helps a lot. I, I just, you know, kind of echoing what Commissioner Rosario said, you know, the Coleman Avenue is, is a main entryway to our airport from downtown, so residents are going out that way, people that are, you know, taking Uber or Lyft to the airport, and it's very unattractive right now. I mean, it's, it's, it's really unfortunate, it's not a great selling point for our city, for folks going to our airport. By the way, I love our airport, thank you guys. So, from that standpoint, I, I think that we're preserving, you know, 90 or 95% of the parkland and developing the street frontage with something that's going to be useful, right? I mean, when I go to the airport, I'm looking for a gas station or somewhere to stop and grab something to eat, or, you know, whatever it might be, so, and I'm envisioning that's probably what you folks are going to encourage the developers to do. So, with all that in mind, I'm going to make a, a motion to approve the staff recommendation for this item.
All right. We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Young, with a second from Commissioner Oliverio. We will continue our discussion with Commissioner Lardenwa, Commissioner Bendall, and then Commissioner Oliverio.
Great, thanks. So, I just want to address...
Great, thanks. Um, so I just want to address, um, respectfully to Vice Chair Cantrell, I actually don't think that the city wasn't transparent about the encampment issue. I mean, that was directly addressed in the staff presentation. Um, I understand that there's a, that's a complicated issue and there's a lot of things going on with that and this is just a small part of it. So, um, yeah, I don't, I don't, I personally don't take issue with how it was discussed in this project. Um, but yeah, I also want to echo everything that Commissioner Young said. Um, this is a, you know, Coleman Avenue is a major commercial corridor in San Jose. So the opportunity to address these FAA issues while, excuse me, FAA issues while also providing an opportunity for economic development in our city is great. So I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Over to Commissioner Bendall.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you guys for all the Q and As. Um, I'm sure we've all driven through Taylor Street when we take the 87 exit. Um, and let's just be honest, it's, it's an eyesore. I think it can use a lot of help, right? Um, like Commissioner Young was mentioning, I mean, we all live here, so we're probably, probably used to it, but we have so many people that are coming up from outside of San Jose. When they get to see that it's probably not the best use of that land, I also believe that Columbus Park can use a lot of help. So I'm kind of excited for the changes that you guys are proposing there. I get that tonight, maybe not all the plans are concrete, but I feel like it, this is a step towards our right direction. So I do support this project.
Thank you. Over to Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, whatever we can do to reduce the cost of employment for the airport so it can be competitive, so it, uh, has all the potential to do things. Uh, it, it would be great, whatever proposal comes before the city, whether it's the airport or anyone else, to, to actually model and present what those numbers are. It just provides more transparency in government, but I'm certainly going to support it and wish the airport well.
Thank you. I don't see any additional hands, so we will move on to a vote. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I just want to be clear for the record. I don't disagree with the concept of not having unhoused people living right at the end of a landing strip. Um, I don't think that place is conducive for living, period. What I don't believe happened here was that clear statement of that case. I don't know why. I think, you know, some of it might be, well, we don't want to talk about displacement of people. They've already been displaced. This has not been commercial land for so long for other reasons. This is the, in my view, the main reason to do this now. So this is not just because we want more commercial space. We could have done this many, many years ago for all kinds of other reasons, but we're doing this now for a reason. I just think we should be transparent. Just be honest, let people make their own decisions about how they feel. I don't think unhoused people deserve to live in places that are uninhabitable for other people. I don't think that's good for anybody. So just for the record, don't oppose it. I just like it to be transparent. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Oliverio.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that San Jose is, uh, more expensive than LaGuardia, Chicago, Vegas, Orlando, San Juan, Puerto Rico, and Fort Lauderdale. And some of that's economies of scale. But whatever it can do to keep that cost low, because that ultimately affects, uh, consumers, airlines giving us routes, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will move on to a vote. Uh, the motion on the floor is from Commissioner Young with a second from Commissioner Oliverio, and it is to approve the staff recommendation. We will start the voting with Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Barocchio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bendall.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lardenwa.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Oliverio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's nine yes, zero no's. So the motion passes. All right. We will move on to the final item this evening, uh, which is Burbank 45, C 21 dash 034, GP 23 dash 001, and H, H 23 dash 005, T 23 dash 003, and ER 23 dash 026, uh, which is related to the annexation of five unincorporated lots from Santa Clara County into the city of San Jose, as well as a site development permit to allow the demolition of five existing commercial structures, uh, for the construction of a mixed-use development consisting of 94 100% affordable rental units, including one manager's unit, uh, at 1921 West San Carlos Street. Uh, staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes. Thank you, Chair. Um, next slide, please. Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Ruth Cueto. I am, uh, principal planner. Um, our project manager, Myra Blanco, could not make it tonight, so I'm here to present on her behalf. We also have, uh, Reema Mahmood from the environmental, um, planning team, as well as David Keon and members of the public works department. Um, we are here to discuss, uh, as was mentioned, a privately initiated annexation and pre-zoning, an amendment to the general plan from mixed-use commercial to urban village and a site development permit and vesting tentative map to facilitate, uh, and allow the construction of a seven-story mixed-use building consisting of 94 100% affordable housing units and approximately 1,800 square feet of commercial. Uh, while the project has a San Jose address, it is located in an urbanized county pocket and within the county's jurisdiction at the moment. It's made up of five contiguous parcels. The annexation would detach the project site and a portion of Cleveland Avenue totaling approximately 0.91 acres from special districts such as the Burbank sanitary district, central fire district, and pre-zone the site, um, to urban village zoning district. Planning staff coordinated with the county of Santa Clara and the boundaries of the annexation were certified by the county surveyor on June 5th, 2025. Um, annexing a portion of Cleveland Avenue, the, the street, is consistent with previous annexations in the area and would facilitate the operation and maintenance of the project. The urban village zoning district corresponds with the proposed urban village general plan designation. Next slide. As shown on this slide, the project is comprised of five parcels totaling 0.56 gross acres and has frontage on West San Carlos and Cleveland Avenue. It's located in Council District Six and is within the West San Carlos Urban Village Plan. The project site is developed with five commercial buildings totaling approximately 12,500 square feet. Next slide. This is a Google street view of the existing site conditions from West San Carlos and Cleveland Avenue. Most of the buildings on the site are currently vacant and not in operation. Next slide. The project site has a designation of mixed-use commercial, um, general plan designation of mixed-use commercial. The applicant has requested to amend the designation to urban village to provide greater density and utilize more flexible development standards to ma- maximize the project site. The urban village designation would further the goals of the general plan and be compatible and consistent with the two properties across the street, which also have urban village designation. As mentioned earlier, it would help us further our housing goals, specifically affordable housing and Reno goals. Next slide. Whoops, a little messy. My apologies. Because the project site has an existing mixed-use commercial designation and it's included in the West San Carlos Urban Village Plan, the amendment would require a text correction to that adopted plan, um, and specifically figure three dash one in the plan, which is the plan's land use map. The change in color from light orange peach to a dark orange. Next slide. The urban village designation was selected as an appropriate designation as it would allow the project, um, at the proposed density of 168 dwelling units per acre, affords the project more flexible development standards, and is still compatible with the Greater West San Carlos Urban Village Plan. The density is especially important for this project because under the current mixed-use commercial designation, it would be capped at 50 dwelling units to the acre or 28 units max, whereas the urban village designation is an unlimited density. Next slide. The site development permit would allow the demolition of the existing commercial buildings and construction of a seven-story mixed-use building with 94 units and approximately 1,800 square feet of commercial space. The project also includes requests under density bonus law, including additional height, four concessions, and eight waivers from various development standards. Next slide. The project also includes a vesting tentative map, which would combine five contiguous parcels into one lot totaling approximately 0.56 acres. Next slide. Consistent with policy six dash 30, public outreach, a community meeting was held on September 23rd, 2024 via Zoom. Four members of the public attended the meeting in addition to planning and public work staff, the applicant team, and a representative from Council District Six. An onsite sign was posted on the property since October 2023. The community meeting, as well as the hearings for this item, were noticed using a 1,000-foot mailing radius, radius. Next slide. Reema?
Good evening, Commissioners. Reema Mahmood, environmental planner with the planning division. The city prepared an initial study for this project, and the initial study identified potentially significant impacts for construction, air quality, and noise, hazards and hazardous materials, and tribal cultural resources. All impacts would be reduced to less than significant levels with the implementation of mitigation measures. Therefore, the appropriate level of secret documentation for this project is the mitigated negative declaration. The mitigated negative declaration was circulated for a public review period from October 28th, 2024, to November 20th, 2024. The city received six comment letters during the public review period. None of the comments provided any new information that would result in significant environmental impacts. Responses to the comments were posted to the city's website on January 9th, 2025. No further comments on the environmental review process have been received to date. Back to you, Ruth.
Um, this is staff's recommendation, which is included in, um, the staff report. If you can go to the next slide, please. And next steps are city council, uh, hearing for the annexation general plan, site development permit, everything before you today on May 6th. After that, on May 20th, uh, there would be a second hearing at city council ordering the annexation for the site. Um, the applicant would have to comply with conditions of approval and submit a complete building permit application. And finally, um, the local agency formation commission, I'm sorry, LSCO, would certify the annexation as well. And that is the end of the presentation.
Thank you, staff. We will now turn it over to the project applicant for a five-minute presentation.
Good evening, uh, uh, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name is Henry Guan. I'm the senior project director with Path Ventures. Um, I'm representing the owner, developer, and the applicants for this project. And I'm joining, um, this presentation is, uh, our architect Steinber Har, and she will go into the, some of the presentation later on. Um, can we go to the next slide, please? Uh, we are very excited today to bring you to the city of San Jose, the latest and newest affordable housing project. As, uh, staff had mentioned earlier, this will be a 94-unit, 100% affordable housing development, um, serving mostly large families. And we also have reserved a significant amount of units for permanent supported housing units, which will be reserved for individuals experiencing homelessness. Um, Path Ventures and Path, our, uh, sister companies, then we have this robust service provision for all of our supported housing and affordable housing developments in San, city of San Jose. And, uh, we have, um, implemented multiple practices and amenities in these, uh, communities that we built, including, um, services office and supportive services for the individuals coming out of the homelessness and make sure that they are thriving in this community. For this specific site, we are building into additional bike rooms, community room, outdoor gathering space, and also playground for the residents and their kids and children, just because it's intended for a large family site. And, uh, we, in addition to the, um, public, um, community outreach conducted last year, we, as a developer, we actually self-initiated multiple community meetings back in 2021 and 2022 to the neighbors and community members, uh, before the public, uh, uh, meeting last year. And we have received a lot of positive input from the community members and we incorporated those feedbacks into our design, which Katia will share in her presentation.
Of course, the ultimate goal is to provide affordable housing. However, there are some ultimate project goals that we wanted to achieve. And the first one was really encouraging the wellness of the residents. Also create opportunities for art, either at the ground floor or at each one of the gathering spaces. Design with certain quality in order to provide dignified housing for our affordable housing in the city. Be a good neighbor to the community. We understand that there are some single-family residences on the, on the north side. And also capitalize the gifts of the site, because there are some very nice views once you start getting to the fourth, fifth, and sixth floor. Next. So the design concept is really to provide affordable housing that respects, reflects, and connects. Next. When we go to, when we talk about respect, is that respect of the neighborhood and the climate. So we did a lot of environmental analysis and rather than just providing two bars, we started playing with, what does that respect to the climate? What are the right orientation for those gathering spaces? And really pay attention to those areas for gathering, you know, for the residents. Next. And reflecting the neighborhood character, that West San Carlos area is full of a lot of signage, you know, that has a lot of that mid-century feeling. But there are also some characteristics in the materials that are white, the terracotta colors that we try to incorporate in the project. Next. And of course, connecting with people, connected with people within the community. That's why we have gathering spaces at different locations on the west side and on the east side. Um, that's why we also have that brief soleil that could be part of the art, you know, or a component that the community could participate as part of the project. And also connecting at the ground floor, we have a small retail space. Next. And I would just like to say, all of the easy sites on the city are gone. Now we're, we're, we're working on those projects that they need. A lot of concessions and waivers in order to make project a reality, but we hope that the city council, you know, and what, starting with you and the planning commission, will support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open the floor to public comment. Uh, first up, we have Allison Singalani from SV at Home, followed by Manuel Salazar from SV at Home, and Jake Wild from Catalyze SV.
Good evening, Allison Singalani, Director of Policy with Silicon Valley at Home, um, speaking in support of Path Villas. Uh, so we are, uh, asking that the council recommend that, or I'm sorry, asking that the commission, uh, recommend that the council take the series of actions recommended by staff. Uh, it's exciting to see affordable housing proposed in the West San Carlos Urban Village. Uh, this is 93 units of affordable housing, um, accessible to very low and low-income families. Uh, some really exciting two- and three-bedroom units. We know we don't have nearly enough of those in our affordable housing stock, um, that can really contribute to moving forward toward the, the large arena that we're, we're looking at for affordable housing. Uh, the requested incentives and waivers under the density bonus law are really thoughtfully crafted, um, to create a well-designed project that maximizes the land available even as it's providing those larger units. Um, Path is already an excellent partner to the city, and this project was developed with thoughtful community engagement, uh, well-designed spaces for residents, and we're pleased that it has good access to transit, as well as programs that, uh, that offer some additional transit alternative access. So, um, we are happy to support. Thank you.
Hi again. Uh, good evening, members of the San Jose Planning Commission. My name is Manuel Salazar, and I'm here on behalf of SV at Home to voice our support for Path Villas at Buena Vista, uh, the Buena Vista Project. So this 100% affordable housing development will bring 94 homes, including a manager's unit, for individuals and families earning between 30 to 60% of the area median income. These homes will be deed restricted for at least two to five years, advancing the city's Reno goals and deepening housing stability in the West San Carlos Urban Village. In today's challenging, uh, development climate, this project stands out by using SP 330 to streamline entitlements and the state density bonus law. streamline entitlements and the state density bonus law to secure critical waivers and concessions. The applicant is making an otherwise infeasible project work. I'd like to note that Path Villas is more than just affordable housing. It's also a community asset. The project will include 1,800 square feet of ground floor commercial space, over 9,000 square feet of common open space, 58 total bike parking spaces, 37 car parking spaces, this despite not needing to because the project is exempt from TDM requirements, and it's also a great example of smart transit-oriented development as it just shortwalked from the VTA lines 61 and 523. For these reasons and many more, I'd like to urge the Planning Commission to follow staff's recommendation and support the following actions. Adopt the mitigated negative declaration, MMRP, approve the pre-zoning to the urban village, recommend annexation proceedings, approve the general plan amendments and urban village plan text amendments, approve the site development permit and density bonus request, and approve the tentative map to facility development. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jake Wild. I'm with Catalyze SV, and I am here tonight to state our support for this project and our support for staff's recommendation. Our members first scored this project in October of 2021, so a while ago now. It scored a 4.33 out of 5, so fairly high by our standards, and it scored, that's well above our threshold of 3.5 for support. You just got a good five-minute presentation about all of the benefits this project has. It checks a lot of boxes. Path does good work. They have other projects in San Jose. And I think what they touched on, saying that all of the easy projects, all the easy sites are done. Now it's time to do these hard projects. And I think it'll be a good day when these projects don't have to go through as lengthy of a process or even be at a hearing like this and can much more speedily get approved and importantly, get built. So please approve staff's recommendation and send this forward on to city council. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all of the cards that I have here. If there's anyone else who'd like to provide public comment on this item, please come down to the podium at this time. Okay, not seeing anyone move forward. So with that, we will turn it back over to the project applicant for an additional five minutes.
I don't have any details to add. Just thank you for the opportunity to present this project, and we hope that you could approve the recommendation. Thank you.
Sounds good. In that case, we will turn it over to the commission. We have a long list here, so we'll get started with Commissioner Oliverio, followed by Lardonois, Bigford, and Vice Chair Cantrell.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to put forward a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
I think Commissioner Lardonois beat you to it. So we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Oliverio with a second from Commissioner Lardonois. Any additional comments to add, either Commissioner Lardonois or Bigford?
I have one question. It's about the open space. You said some of these units are two- and three-bedroom. What's the, the open space going to be like for these families? Is there a playground? Is there other outdoor amenities?
Yes. Is it possible for us to show the rendering again?
It's okay. I just.
Yeah, there, there is open space almost on every single floor, and we have a playground on the second story facing the, the supermarket. If, can we go to one? Yeah, right there. So as you can see, there are multiple courtyards on different levels, kind of stacking to the, the side of the, where the single-family homes are putting it. And then you also have another's open space at the corner of West San Carlos and Cleveland Avenue. And then behind it, you probably cannot see it from this picture, but there's a playground facing the supermarket next to this project. It used to be a 99 cent store. It's now La Plaza Market that was open a few months ago.
Thank you very much. 100% supportive of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to add, Commissioner Lardonois?
Commissioner Oliverio already said everything I was going to say.
I was going to say something else. Thank you for doing the hard work. I wish this were easier. I wish we could do this every single meeting.
Yeah, big supporter of this project. Very happy to see family-sized units here and family-oriented amenities. Great to see supportive housing included and really appreciate the architect and the project applicant being so proactive in terms of engaging with the local community, really trying to be good neighbors here. So thank you. No additional hands here, so we will move on to a vote. As a reminder, the motion is to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Oliverio with a second from Commissioner Lardonois. First up is Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Brocio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bendal.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lardonois.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio. Commissioner Rosario.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That is nine yes, zero no. So the motion passes. All right. That concludes the agenda here. We will continue the general plan hearing to April 29th, 2025, moving on to referrals from city council, boards, commissions, or other agencies. Staff, do we have any referrals?
To the Chair, Manira Sandir, Deputy Director of Planning. No referrals at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. In that case, moving on to good and welfare, do we have a report from city council?
No reports from city council.
Okay. Then anything on either subcommittee formation, reports, outstanding business, or commission calendar and study sessions?
I do want to report that the Planning Commission, we will be doing a study session on May 14th on the capital improvement plan, but no other reports on the other items.
Thank you. In that case, we will open the floor to any comments for the public record.
One question. Are we likely to have a meet, the next meeting next, this month? Or, because a lot of times meetings get deferred and that type of thing.
To the Chair, I'm not sure at this point, but I can check and follow back.
Fair enough. Thanks.
Sounds good. Any other comments for the public record? All right. If not, we will adjourn at 9:27 PM. Thank you, everyone.